Whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes the professional dedication of approximately 8,000 certified and classified employees. And whereas the district commits all employees for their unparalleled contribution to the lives of students as mentors and as examples of character who are indispensable to the mission of the district. And whereas it is timely and appropriate to recognize the extraordinary endeavors of employees like interpreters and translators whose work is acknowledged. On September 30, 2020, custodial staff whose hard work is celebrated on October 2, 2020. School counselors who are honored the week of February 1st to the 5th, 2021. School librarians who are honored on April 14, 2021. Clerico support personnel including administrative assistants and secretaries who are honored on April 21, 2021. Cafeteria workers who are celebrated on May 7, 2021. And school nurses whose day is May 12, 2021. Therefore be resolved that members of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District join our community in thanking all certified and classified employees. And honor them for accepting the charge of nurturing and educating our students. So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and second. If there's no other discussion, we will go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers? I. Motion carried. Thank you. We are 1.4 and we are going to be inspired by somebody that just can inspire us just because he's here. Mr. Gallo?
You know, I've been thinking about some of the things I've wanted to say and, you know, I've watched as many of you have, you know, how our country is currently going through so many trials and tribulations here. And, you know, this is not the first time in history that this has happened, you know, in 1933 when our nation was emerging from the Great Depression. President Franklin Delano Roosevelt said during his inauguration speech that we have nothing to fear but fear itself. And he was basically trying to calm the economic fears of the nation at the time. And then about a decade later, a guy by the name of Winston Churchill, you know, obviously amidst the fears of, you know, a dire World War II outcome. They weren't sure whether they were going to survive as a nation due to physical assault and war. You know, he said that fear is a reaction, courage is a decision. And, you know, so if I were to have any wish for you, it would be that you live a life of courage and resist fear in your life, you know. And I know that what we're going through and experiencing here, we feel like we have no, you know, what can we do about it? You know, we're just kind of quote victims, you know, we don't have to be victims, you know, and fear is paralyzing. It really is. It's of little or no value and hinders you in achieving all of your goals, objectives, virtually anything as a nation. So, you know, I got kind of a battle cry for 2020 and it's basically no fear, you know. And I'm just, you know, listening to folks, seeing social media, all of this stuff. And I just encourage you to have a spirit of gratefulness for the many, many, many blessings that you have. To be fortunate enough to be in the 5% of the world's population that's here in the United States. And the many blessings and freedoms that you have. And I just ask that you be an encourager, you know, a positive influence in the world and in others' lives. And I know that's why, you know, our school board, for example, is doing this. And it's chosen to go through, you know, election processes and all of this kind of stuff. And it's basically to serve our students and to serve our communities. And, you know, there's enough people pointing out where the strong and courageous stumble, you know. It's a whole lot easier to criticize than create. So I just kind of ask you to be an encourager, be a creator. If you do have to complain, and sometimes we all do, you know, we have to complain and raise our voices up for injustice. But when you do, I'd say please propose a practical solution, you know, come with solutions, come with the answer. And it's not just breaking down society and reforming it into something else that you think is going to be better. Let's make better what we have now and here and take that on as our charter and mantra. And as I know many of you leaders are doing and many people in our community are doing. I just thank you for engaging in the process. I think it's healthy to have healthy discourse and things. But we should do so with a spirit of gratefulness and that's basically my message for today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gallo. That was definitely inspirational and really from the heart. So I hope that as many people are online was able to hear that. Thank you again for that. We appreciate it. Yes, yes, Dr. Flores?
Mike, that really struck home, struck my heart. And it just speaks to our camaraderie as a board in terms of us being courageous. And it was so apropos, I just want to thank you. And I know we are grateful for each other and also for our community and all the blessings that we have. And, you know, fear for me stands for false evidence appearing real. So, you know, we make it up in our minds. But anyway, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. 2.1 Resolution in recognition of all San Bernardino City Unified School District employees. Dr. Wyatt, can you read that resolution, please? If you're able to pull it up, I know sometimes it's...
I know, that's what I'm trying to do right now.
Are you able to pull it up? Oh, you're on mute if you're talking to us.
How about now, Madam President?
Okay, got it.
All right, I am looking for it though and I apologize. Usually it comes up on the screen.
Were you able to click on it in the screen?
Well, you just have to go to who's presenting, who's presenting right now.
I have it.
You have it, Mr. Tillman?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Tillman, no worries, we'll get you next time.
Whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District recognizes the professional dedication of approximately 8,000 certified and classified employees. And whereas the district commits all employees for their unparalleled contribution to the lives of students as mentors and as examples of character who are indispensable to the mission of the district. And whereas it is timely and appropriate to recognize the extraordinary endeavors of employees like interpreters and translators whose work is acknowledged. On September 30, 2020, custodial staff whose hard work is celebrated on October 2, 2020. School counselors who are honored the week of February 1st to the 5th, 2021. School librarians who are honored on April 14, 2021. Clerico support personnel including administrative assistants and secretaries who are honored on April 21, 2021. Cafeteria workers who are celebrated on May 7, 2021. And school nurses whose day is May 12, 2021. Therefore be resolved that members of the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District join our community in thanking all certified and classified employees. And honor them for accepting the charge of nurturing and educating our students. So moved.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and second. If there's no other discussion, we will go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers? I. Motion carried. We are now at 2.2. And 2.2, we're going to hear, we know that our parents have been definitely still diligently working during this socially distancing time. But nevertheless, they're working to make sure that all of our parents come together and receive the needs that they have now and will have going forward. So I'm looking forward to all of our parent advisory committees between now and the next four months into our school year to be able to present to us. Because we want to get back on task and make sure that the faces of all of our parent advisors are before our parents. So that they know that the support is there through those committees. So tonight, we have District African American Advisory Committee providing an annual report. And I believe that is with Ms. Devana Robertson. Are you here? Are you logged in with us? And I think you're on mute, so you can come off mute and begin your presentation.
Okay, am I off mute now?
Yes.
Awesome. Yes, it's myself and two of my other fellow board members as well. And so when David puts up our slides, we'll get rolling.
Your slides are up.
Good evening, Board.
Okay, I can't see the slide, sorry.
Good evening, Board. Hello. President, Cabinet and Community. And thank you tonight for having the District African American Council, short for DAC. We would like to present to you an update on what the District African American Council have been working on with Cabinet and Parents. And now I would like to introduce Rashonda who will share the food for thought. That would be the next slide.
Good evening, Board. Our food for thought. I realize that not every youth gets an equal chance at becoming successful. Some never get a chance at all. And not every young person believes that tomorrow can be better than today or that they deserve a chance to be successful. It is not right that with all our resources, every young person is not afforded the opportunity to be the best they can be if they want to. Our communities are hurting, our systems need fixing. We can't wait on the government, institutions, social programs and policies to meet the needs of our communities. It's in our hands. Ludicrous. Now, our DAC president will share our intro. Devana?
Thank you, Rashonda Amia. So what we have before you on the next slide is just the four bullet points that we'll cover with you guys briefly this evening. This is a presentation that we shared with the cabinet a couple of weeks ago and so we just wanted to bring it to the board as well. And so we'll be talking about the DAC platform, the importance of well-being, education and academic assessment. Next slide, please. And so the first topic is our DAC platform. So prior to COVID-19, we had already been in preparation to work on branding. And so Dr. Greer and the ESS department have been so gracious to assist us in getting the items that we felt were needed to help make us more visible at the school sites as well as at community events. And especially with the African American parents, guardians and community members. We are also working on creating a virtual presence via Zoom or Google meets, especially during the shutdown and distance learning. And so we've already began to do a weekly S.O.L. DAC talk via Zoom where we get over, make room and give space for parents to share their concerns, their celebrations. who are, um, you know, social media is a place where they get information and they tap in with each other. So we want to make sure we have presence there as well. And so I'll pass it back to Rashonda.
Okay, thank you, Devana. Okay, one of our main concerns is the wellbeing of our African American students and their families. Especially now during this pandemic when most are struggling to adapt to their new norm. It's very important to support our African American students and their families by building those positive relationships, providing district and community resources, and of course, our ongoing work with Dr. Nikki Elliott, the Mindful Leaders Project, and begin some new work with Parenting for Liberation. And with that being said, it will be our Vice President, Mia.
Thank you, Rashonda. Next slide, please. So I'll be talking about special education and tutoring. Regarding special education, um, we want to think about our high schoolers when they're exiting out of high school and where they're going to go. While the school district does have a program for them, which is called the Work School, it's not known amongst some staff, students and parents and the community. And it would be nice if we can start promoting the Work School program for high schoolers. So they know that once they exit high school, there is support for them to get their college degree and/or a certificate. As one student who's in the program says, they're very thankful for having the program and all the things that they do for them. Because without the program, they would just be working with no plan. So I'm asking today for the board to look into that program and for us to, um, expand on that program for our high schoolers. And as we're going into district learning, it is so important for us to have tutoring for our students. And for them to communicate, the tutoring company, person, whoever it is, to communicate with the teacher, the parent and the student. This is new for all of us. And we, while we have to be patient and be understanding, we don't want our kids to get further behind. And having that extra support services for our students would be, um, very wonderful. Now I will pass it to Devana to present our other board member who was not able to present tonight, Jennifer. Devana?
Thank you, Mia. Next slide, please. So this topic, academic assessment, is extremely important to all of us, but especially Jennifer. And some of the concerns that she has, as well as some other parents have expressed is how is support for our individual, our students' individual needs, what is that going to look like? Especially with us not, um, having the ability to be in person. And some of those resources that kids were being pulled out of class for or after-school support or before-school support is just not going to look the same. So how, um, what that is going to look like and how that's going to happen is really important for our parents to be clear on. Next will be the process for evaluating and maintaining current levels. So some parents have been concerned about, my student is not only at, um, grade level, but they're actually above or their skills are beyond where they should be. And how do I make sure I don't lose that, but not only lose their, um, where they are, but also how do we continue to grow? And how can that, how does that work? How does that look during, um, distance learning? And we understand some of these questions you all don't have an answer to. We have to learn as we go, but just wanted to lift some of these concerns that our parents have. And reporting measures, measures as well as relationships with parents and teachers. And so how, um, are parents going to be notified in a timely manner? And also notified, um, in a way, and it's communicated in a way to our parents that is obtainable and that they can take what information is given to them and then actually do, um, their part with the students to make sure that if they're behind, if they're at grade level or if they're above, that they're continuing to grow. So, um, we understand assessments happen all the time during the regular school year. But during this distance learning, we think it's important that it's more than what the regular has been. It has to be something above and beyond that as well. And I think that this is an important time, or I think this is, let me say this better. I think that this is a great opportunity to really build a partnership. Not talking about family engagement, but really build a partnership between teachers and parents. And I also think it's a great time for what our new will be, to not just be left in the hands of the board alone, to not just be left in the hands of the cabinet alone and the teachers' union, but also, um, whatever our new is, needs to really have the input, the feedback, the, the feel, the taste, the sound, all of that good stuff of the parents as well. So we have opportunity to build something new and it really should have, um, the input and, um, the, the input from parents as well. We shouldn't be responding to what is being told to us. We should actually be a part of the process to build what our, our new, um, normal is going to be. So next slide, please. So one of the best people to quote is Michelle Obama, um, that's my opinion anyway. So in the words of Michelle Obama, "When you have worked hard and done well and walked through that doorway of opportunity, you do not slam it shut behind you. You reach back and give other folks the same chances that helped you succeed." And so why that, that quote is important, because it's not just about, um, all of you folks who have been longstanding community members that sit on the board, teachers that have been a part of the community, but also us as parents who are part of the community. It's important that we give, while we're in a position, um, on the, on a parent board in the district, that we also give opportunity for newer parents to come in, for younger parents to come in with new and vibrant ideas and their voices also be heard. And so we want to make sure that we continue to keep the door of opportunity open for our scholars, for our community and as well as the parents. So with that being said, we thank you, Board, for giving us the opportunity to give you a brief, um, a version of what we gave to the cabinet a couple of weeks ago. We look forward to continuing to come back before you and give you updates, bring concerns and celebrations as well as solutions, um, in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, um, to the DAC and to the DAC officers. Um, what a wonderful job updating us. And again, as I said at the onset, this is going to be so important for our families moving forward to have these connections. And again, that is the reason why I'm looking forward to all of our family groups, um, presenting. And you all did a fabulous job. I believe Mr. Tillman has a comment, so don't get nervous, you all. You're doing good.
Yeah, Ms. Robertson and Ms., uh, uh, Benjamin, a great presentation. And, uh, I think you really know that when you talked about, um, taking that next step and ensuring that the community and our students and parents get direct input from the actual teachers. I think in this new learning environment, that's going to be critical. And how we surround our students with the necessary extra resources to ensure that we don't have students falling behind. So, and, and on the quote that you have from, uh, Michelle Obama, uh, that's what we're all about. I know that's what you ladies are about, uh, you prove it every day. That's why you're on this committee. Just for, just for the record, not getting paid money to be on the committee.
Thank you, Jim.
Not being paid to be on the committee and
No, no, I'm not.
And, and you, and you're working very hard. And, and because people see you out there, they just assume you're getting paid a hundred thousand dollars. So why are you for you that you are getting paid? And you're doing it to benefit the community and our students. So I can't thank you all enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comment, Dr. Flores?
Uh, yes, I, I want to personally thank you also, um, Devana, Rashonda and Mia. I, I, I don't know if anybody else spoke, I think you, I didn't get the, I didn't catch the name, but
Yeah, Jennifer, she wasn't there.
Jennifer, it was, it was a very well presented, uh, you know, uh, pl- uh, platform. I, I congratulate you. And, um, you know, the things that you brought up, uh, about, uh, you know, um, tracking our kids, providing them tutoring, uh, you know, making people accountable. That's really important and we have to do a better job, uh, for, um, our African American kids, all our kids. And I, I really encourage you to, to submit all of these things that you want as solutions, you know, to the LCAP so that we can, uh, you know, address them specifically. Uh, but, um, you know, students having supports for our students academically are really, really important. And my concern has always been accountability and we need our kids to have those supports. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. And our high school kids especially, and our middle school kids. And, well, all our kids, but I, especially our middle school and high school kids, uh, as we move through this, uh, new, new, right? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know there's a comment in the chat, uh, Dr. Hill, would you like me to read that? You think they saw it or would you like to say it? Great comments to them.
Oh, I, I'm sure they saw it, but I just want to say thank you and awesome job and we appreciate you so much.
Absolutely.
All for you.
Thank you.
Exactly. Now you can breathe. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are moving now into three point one closed session, public comments. Are there any, Karen?
No, there are not.
There are not. All right. So before we adjourn to closed session, um, we do want to, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Volkmer for an announcement. I just think it's great, um, you know, now as we've moved along, there are many, uh, normal, what we would call normal things that we used to do, um, when we were in person. But now that we've caught up our breath a little bit, we are now able to make sure that we don't miss out on the things, especially rec- recognitions. We have individuals that are, are retiring now and we want to acknowledge them. There's a video that's going to be playing, but I'm going to let Dr. Volkmer talk about that.
Thank you, President Rogers. Uh, don't have, I've got just a little left to say. Board, typically, as you know, uh, we reserve an extra board meeting in the month of May to, um, spend a little time recognizing those who are, uh, moving on to the next stage of their lives, um, through retirement. Uh, and also those who have reached milestones in their service to the district. We recognize people that have worked 25 years for the district, 35 years and 40, uh, years for the district. Given the COVID virus and stay-at-home orders, we obviously were not able to do that, but we did not want to let too much time pass before, uh, we recognized these terrific, uh, members of our team. Uh, and so our Dynamite Communications Department has put together a video, uh, that's going to play as we're in closed session, uh, that recognizes, uh, their accomplishments and, uh, the service that they've given so well. So we want to say congratulations and thank you to all of them.
All right, and we're giving virtual claps because we didn't get the chance to see it. So hopefully we did a good job. Okay, um, Board and to our, our viewing audience, the video will be on and we're going to go into a, a short closed session and we will see you shortly. Board, let's log out and move into the closed session. I'm pleased to greet you. Good evening, I'm Board President Gwen Rogers and I'm pleased to greet you today as we honor the men and women who have been an essential part of our school district's success. Usually, we dedicate one board meeting in May to recognize our retirees and employees who are celebrating some milestones and anniversaries. Well, you know, 2020 has been anything but usual. And neither are you because you choose to make hope happen right here in San Bernardino.
And I'm Harold Volkmer, Interim Superintendent for San Bernardino City Schools. And during your accomplished tenure with us, you have touched the lives of literally thousands of children. Children who are now lawyers, designers, journeymen and teachers, police officers and classified employees right here in the San Bernardino City Unified School District.
Everyone watching knows that you don't go into teaching to make a lot of money. People become teachers to make a difference in the lives of their students, to teach them that they can accomplish their goals and become whoever they want to be in this world.
Sometimes the hardest part of teaching is getting the students involved and interested in learning. Something everyone in education confronted this year with the worldwide coronavirus pandemic. But through the years and through countless challenges, you, our valuable employees, have found a way to keep students learning in their classrooms. Some of you have made hope happen by maintaining our facilities in good order. Others have made sure our students had nutritious meals to fuel their learning or spent your time and days with us keeping them safe. But all of you, whether you are retiring or celebrating 25, 35 or even 40 years of service with us, each and every one of you have made a positive difference in the lives of children.
Thank you for leaving your mark on San Bernardino City Unified School District. We are better for your service.
I don't think so. Who do I have?
We have a quorum.
Okay, do we have four? Okay, I see everybody there.
Yeah, Dr. Hill, that's all we need.
I see, I know, she's back. Okay, so we are now resuming from our closed session. Thank you so much for viewing audience, for your patience, and hopefully you enjoyed our retirement video. 4.1 HR certified 19-20-06 Human Resources. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary actions and statement of charges to dismiss the following certificated employee from his employment with the District HR certified 19-20-06.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second, there is no discussion, I will call for the vote. Mr. Gallo, let's see him. Ms. Rosales Medina, did I hear you? Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
When Rogers, aye, motion carried. Thank you. We're now at 5.0 public hearing. I will open up the public hearing for the members.
Did you forget Ms. Medina?
She said aye, I heard her.
Oh, okay, sorry.
She came in under me when I was speaking.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, memorandum of understanding 2020-2020-2021 classified work calendars, middle college, high school between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, CSEA, and the Chapter 183 Human Resources. Be it therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommended, oh, I'm sorry, clicking on the wrong one, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the memorandum of understanding classified workers' calendar, middle college, high school between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, CSEA, and Chapter 183 on June 15, 2020, the California School Employees Association, CSEA 1610 policy review was completed.
Madam President, I know you probably opened the public hearing.
I did.
And then I think we close the public hearing and then we take action, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President, this is Karen. I just wanted to let you know there were no comments.
No comments. Okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. And Mr. Gallo, is he back? Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
When Rogers, aye, motion carried. Thank you. We're now at 6.1, receiving public comments. And I believe Karen, you are geared up for public comments, and I'm going to read this notification. Public comments is the time during the agenda when the board is prepared to receive comments from the public within the subject matter jurisdiction, such as policies, regulations, and procedures of the district, comments on programs, services, or operations of the district, of fiscal matters of the district. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda. Pursued to the provision of the Governor's Executive Order N 29-20 dated March 17, 2020, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act are suspended. With the district temporarily suspending public access to the Board of Education building, members of the public who wish to submit a public comment can do so beginning 24 hours prior to the start of the meeting via email until 4:30 on the night of the board meeting. Forms can be found on the district's website and Facebook. Comments are limited to five minutes or less. All comments on one subject matter are limited to a total of 30 minutes. Comments will be read by a facilitator. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liabilities for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Karen?
Okay, I'm going to start with comments that were submitted at the past two special board meetings that weren't related to any agenda topics. There's about 14, so I'm gonna quickly read those and then I'll move into the ones we received today. First one is from anonymous. "The killing of George Floyd has generated worldwide protests on an unprecedented scale, and the choices our cities, state, and country make today will deeply impact our teachers and students' lives and safety in the future, especially the lives of our dark-skinned children. Based on the survey results or lack of response, I believe our partnerships with families have spoken loudly. They believe their voice will not matter, so why spend the time filling out a survey that will go nowhere? If we are to go beyond traditional boundaries stated in your mission statement, you are going to need civic-minded, outspoken people to spearhead grassroots equity committees to promote authentic and real change to inspire human learning. Please take this opportunity if you truly want safe, respectful, and welcoming environments for our dark-skinned students and staff by reshaping our practices to best meet the needs of our students and families we serve." Next one is from an educator and journalist. "On June 16, the Board made a resolution to recognize and observe Juneteenth. It is a lovely sentiment. Juneteenth is an important day in American history, which brings to question why it was not included in the resolution made about patriotic holidays, where the Board encouraged the teaching of several holidays, not including Juneteenth. My issue is this: The Black community in our nation, our world is suffering, and our suffering is bubbling and pouring out into the streets. You are not seeing riots and protests, you are seeing funeral marches mourning our dead. Platitudes are not enough anymore. We need change. Our children need change. If our Board cannot even commit to celebrating Juneteenth on the actual date of the holiday and push it to a weekend where it can't interfere with our regularly scheduled routine, how is the Black community to trust that you are making any real commitment to our community and our children? I seem to recall that this district made a commitment to improving conditions for Black children in our district a year ago, expecting real results in just one year with a budget of something like $5 million, far less than the $9 million granted to school police, which shows where Black children land in our priorities. What became of that initiative? Where was the money spent? Did you invest in programs like Sankofa that focus on the building the whole child? Or Avid, that is the only program that has a proven record of making real gains in the equity gap for Black and Brown children? What is actually being done? Not long ago, this district was in the news because a Black principal was being targeted and harassed. Two weeks ago, a predominantly Black charter school with high achievement was verbally attacked in a board meeting. Now students are telling stories of racism from teachers on Instagram. How are you making San Bernardino a safe place for the Black community? This does not feel safe. I do not have a child in the district, but I care about my community and a vote. I am glad that you spoke against police brutality. I am glad that you even made some plan to help Black kids last year, but we need more. We need follow-through. We need incidents of racism in the classroom to be reported and kept track of. We need teachers to learn to address their own bias and racism and stop hurting our kids. We need resources to address the gap that this nation created and perpetuates. We need more Black leaders in positions of power to help point out when something is problematic and protect our kids. Are you helping your Black staff get ahead? Are you offering scholarships to teachers of color across the spectrum to pay for the tests they need to become principals, so your staff demographics can better match your student demographics? I looked it up. It is less than $800. What kind of difference could you make if you set aside a simple $8,000 to help Black POC and LGBTQ staff make it into decision-making positions and show our kids themselves reflected in leadership? Wouldn't that be powerful? I bet it would also help retain a diverse staff as well. This district has 50,000-some students. Why does your equity department only have four or five staff? This makes no sense to me. I learned in church that you can tell what a person cares about by following their bank account. If we looked at how much is being spent on equity and Black kids and compared it to the rest of your spending, what story would it tell? I believe that this board really wants to make a difference. I believe that you actually care about our community, and that is why you took this job. If this is true, listen to us. The Black community is tired of platitudes. We are tired of broken promises, and we are tired of waiting." The next one is from a SBCUSD teacher. "New Jersey is the first state to mandate Black history being taught in all grade levels. The state's Amistad law, signed by Governor Jim McGreevy in 2002, requires public schools to incorporate African-American history into K-12 social studies lessons. The law honors the enslaved Africans who gained their freedom after overthrowing the crew of the slave ship Amistad in 1839. This happens 18 years ago. How can we catch up?" This one is from Kathleen Valdez, a parent. "Can an all-inclusive parent group be formed? This group would be available to all parents to join regardless of race, ethnicity, student learning status, language spoken, school site, etc. I understand the need for certain parent groups, CAC, ELAC, APAC, DLEC, and so many others, but what if a parent doesn't fit in any of those categories? Are they out of the opportunity to be part of a parent group? I thought PTA was such a group, but it's mostly fundraising. With all that is going on in the world, I really feel this would bring parents from all different backgrounds united together. Thank you for your time." This one, Gabriel Mesa, a parent. "I have been listening to the comments submitted to the Board on various occasions, and I wanted to know why once again the Board didn't allow all stakeholders to comment on the plan to move a charter school on the campus of Del Vallejo Middle School. As being a parent of a special-needs student who looked forward to his STEAM elective classes and to find out that the STEAM lab was dismantled for a charter school, I am not pleased and will be looking for other avenues to solve this issue. I may not have all the information, but there are laws in place that require notification of all stakeholders prior to making these types of decisions. Hopefully, you all will rectify this matter ASAP." Next one's from Mrs. Gutierrez, a parent. "I would like to know why Mr. Mitchell scrapped the plans for the Parent Center that was to help support our Del Vallejo parents in navigating the education and community environmental systems. I am appalled that he would state a Parent Center is a luxury. Why can't we have a Parent Center like many other middles? It amazes me that El Cap funds are more concerned with ensuring there's funds for district police than parent engagement." This is from a concerned resident. "How will our students at Del Vallejo stay safe with implementation of social distancing after the district took away 10 classrooms with board approval? It's shameful how the elected officers treat our most vulnerable population." This is from Lydia Zapata. She's a SBCUSD employee. "Students at Del Vallejo Leadership and STEAM Academy are losing SDC classrooms, STEAM labs, computer labs, the Parent Center, handball courts, as well as other spaces on the campus. The staff wants the best for all students, including those from Savant, but it's not clear why Del Vallejo students have to be compromised when there are other schools in the district that Savant can use that are larger and more spacious. Thank you." This is from a community member. "I am writing today as a community member and a teacher in SBCUSD. We all want the same thing for our staff members, for our students, and for this community. We want to develop the unique talents, gifts, and interests of every child so that student success is no longer predicated by student identity, racial, cultural, economic, or any social factor. We want our students to succeed. We want our students to have hope, and we want our students to thrive. Unified, under all of these goals, every single agency in our district came together with one mission in late March: get our classrooms online. This district did an amazing job: administrators, teachers, staff members, working hours upon hours to prepare for the moment students would arrive in their Google classrooms. Dr. Volkimer commented in one board meeting that public school systems notorious for agonizingly sedate change moved nimbly. Ladies and gentlemen, the energetic district response to the COVID-19 closure was a result of teachers and staff receiving the supports they needed to get the job done. I am writing to you tonight because this is unfortunately not the only pandemic requiring our urgent attention and our united action. Of course, I am talking about the pandemic of racism. Recent events have resulted in public comments in these board meetings from the top levels of district administration admonishing looting and rioting, which I have heard parroted by my direct supervisor as 'those stupid looters.' At best, these comments are a diversion preventing real solutions to a very serious issue. At worst, these comments create a permissive atmosphere that can lead to a hostile work environment for my Black colleagues, and worse, for Black students. While the previous public comments have at least been set aside in favor of a Juneteenth proclamation, I need to see what action steps this board will take. I would now like to introduce a single personal demographic. I am white. I have witnessed my Black colleagues suffer abuse, bullying, attack, and consequent demoralization for the privilege of opening dialogue on the issues of racism and violence toward Black children. I have talked to them and learned that they fear returning to a hostile work environment. I have had the opportunity to listen to anecdotal evidence of abuse patterns in this district and others. These are people with a tenacious spirit and a drive to make the lives of the children they teach better, no matter the personal cost. Now they too fear return to school. If we go back to our standard modus operandi, we will move at a snail's pace. A proclamation should not be the extent of the support we will receive. If that is to be the case, there will be little more we can do than to operate under, within the constraints of individual... within the constraints of individual islands of excellence. As a community member, I need to know that our board is willing to do more for the children who live in my community. As a teacher, it is becoming more and more obvious that our entire staff desperately needs ongoing equity training. Those who resist it most likely need it most. Cabinet and Board, you've seen the teachers in this district move quickly, but we've seen you move quickly as well. This is not an issue that can wait. This pandemic kills too. This one is from Stephen Miller, a parent. My name is Stephen Miller, a student from the graduating class of two thousand and twenty and former Explorer captain with our district police department. I first want to say thank you for your continued support of this department and Explorer post. This program has assisted me in many aspects, such as personal growth, by teaching to me to always push myself and to do better than yesterday. Explorers had also prepared me mentally, physically, and academically to meet my goals to enlist with the United States Army, in which I have completed. During my four years as an explorer, I have learned tremendously the importance of a community and how it can play a key role in a single person's life. A community allows us to feel as if we are a part of something bigger than ourselves. A community also gives us a sense of impact to voice our concerns and options. As a former explorer, I had acquired the skills of responsibility and unity while exercising the skill of teamwork. The SBCUSD Police Department is more than a team or department. It is a family that truly does make hope happen. This department has transformed and impacted my life in ways I cannot thank them enough for, modeling and mentoring me from a troubled adolescent whose future would have led to being another statistic to a future soldier with the United States Army. My name is Antonio Mejia. I am an Explorer with the San Bernardino Unified School District Police Department for a long time now, and since I have joined this program, it has taught me many life skills. The Explorer program has assisted me with many things to help me better my personality, to care for the city, and the Explorer post that I am proud to be a part of. The post has helped me with my future goals by learning different law enforcement techniques of criminal justice. This gained knowledge will help me out and become a future law enforcement officer. This post has helped me with my academic success by completing mandatory grade checks on all Explorers. It has kept my overall GPA up. This post has taught me a lot about community service. I love going to this post to help out the community and to learn new things. The SBCUSD PD has positively impacted my life. Gisela Robles, a parent. Good afternoon. Well, good evening, board members. I would like to just thank you all for hearing the voices of the students and parents from the class of two thousand and twenty and making the drive-through graduations happen. I want to especially thank each school administration and staff for all the hard work they did in such a short period of time. It was a beautiful ceremony and a time for healing and closure for our students. Again, thank you so much for making hope happen for them. Kimberly Lowry. She's Link Learning Program Specialist CTE teacher. I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Volkmer and the IT team for their quick action in reference to my concern and request from the board meeting regarding the one G of data for the KJET student and teacher hotspots. I received an email and follow-up phone call from the Director of IT to ask me about my concerns and to let me know that beginning July first, all of the district-issued KJET devices will be changed from one gig of daily data to eight gigs of daily data, which will allow students to attend all of their online classes without interruption or have to choose which classes are the most important to attend. As a teacher, I completely appreciate this fast move. This settles my conscience in the area of grading and worrying about my students not being able to access the curriculum and classes, as they will each have the opportunity to pick up their devices that are being provided by our district for classes. Thank you again for your hard work. Your dedication to our students is truly commendable, and I am proud to be a teacher and represent the SBCUSD as we work together and continue to make hope happen for our kids. And the last one from previous meetings. This is from Mr. Alfredo Aguero. He wanted to say to Mr. Harold Volkmer that his comments were inappropriate because he made them precisely when Mrs. Abigail Medina, member of the SBCUSD Board Member, suggested looking for a way to include the people who participated in these meetings. His comment was heard, and you can also see it in the subtitles on the screen. I think it was a lack of respect on your part against Mrs. Medina and for all those who, at that time, were watching and listening to the meeting. I want to tell you that this is exactly how we are treated when we attend, and we also make comments at district meetings. This is a message of protest against the lack of respect against Mrs. Abigail Medina, who is a Hispanic civil servant, and against all the audience that we participate in these meetings. I also want to comment that the video was edited on the official SBCUSD page, trying to cover the words that Mr. Volkmer mentioned, disrespectful and inappropriate words against the entire community. We believe that a public apology is needed for Mr. Volkmer, not only to apologize here at this meeting. We request that the apology be in writing and posted on the official SBCUSD district website. Although he apologized to Mrs. Abigail Medina at the June sixteenth meeting, there is still an apology to the entire SBCUSD community. Thank you, and we hope you will allow us to take part in district activities. Those were all the comments from previous board meetings. I am now going to start reading the thirty-six comments that were from anonymous community members, and just so you know, they are related to past years and some staff members. I'm going to start reading them, and then kind of halfway through, I'm going to actually have Nicole Post take over for me for a little bit. Okay, now they're all anonymous, so I'm not going to keep repeating that. San Bernardino High School, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Bowman stated many racial remarks in her economic class, so students reported her. The school didn't give much information back to us. I didn't know what was going on. She left for months. Ms. Bowman never taught much. She only showed about two weeks of econ. She cried in class trying to play victim, and it worked. Many students believed her, and some of the students were mad at me for reporting her. Two thousand and ten, Newmark Elementary, Santosh Tricca. Principal Tricca was ridiculously critical of African-American students, including me. Whenever I had incidents of bullying, she blamed me even in instances where I got knocked off swings and had scrapes on my knee. This would also happen when other students would try and instigate me in front of students. Two thousand and thirteen, San Bernardino High School, John Hinkelmann. We were doing a lesson plan, and he was talking about the Garvey movement, and then proceeded to ask every African-American kid in the class if we would want to go back to Africa. Two thousand and eighteen, San Bernardino High, Shannon Bowman. She was mentioning about her trip to Denmark and how she would love to live in Denmark because all the people there are beautiful. And right after that, she said, "There's no black people there," in a super happy tone. Richard Preppson High Middle School, two thousand and sixteen, Ms. Droxel. No matter how much effort I put in the class, she would give most of her kids of color a C in the class. Meanwhile, all the other kids would get As. Two thousand and twenty, San Bernardino High School, Shannon Bowman. All students were playing music, and she only pointed out to Mexican students and told them to turn their beaner music off. San Bernardino High School, two thousand and twenty. She is posting inappropriate posts on her Facebook page saying that the Black Lives Matter movement is for criminals, etc. Two thousand and eighteen, San Bernardino High. Posted inappropriately on his Facebook page about people being separated at the border, calling them illegals. Two thousand and twenty, San Bernardino High, Kim Embriani. She was posting on Facebook about the BLM movement and posting very insensitive and racist comments and picture to her public Facebook account. When I commented on her insensitivity, she continued to ridicule me with other folk. Arrowview Middle School, two thousand and nineteen. Was walking to Mickey D's, and I saw kids bullying, trying to fight Hispanic students, and they started telling them to go back to your own country, you Mexicans. I had my baby nephew. I am a student from San Bernardino High School. I went ahead and jumped in and helped the students, and I walked them to Arrowview to ask for help, but I did not leave until I saw that they got picked up. Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, San Bernardino High School, Kim Embriani. She allowed ASB students from the class of two thousand and nineteen to take drugs and alcohol to an ASB retreat where they spent the night by the beach. She did not separate them and told them to not get caught, and if they did, that she did not know. She also made crude comments about her husband's private parts and boasted about how well endowed he is to her class. San Bernardino High School, two thousand and twenty, Kim Embriani and Clifford Corrigliano. They post many racist comments on their social media. Kim was confronted by a student, and instead of accepting her mistake, she complained to a friend. Kim was complaining how the student was gone for a month, but assumed she was taking a vacation. The student was gone for family problems. San Bernardino High, two thousand and nineteen. A friend of mine, who was part of ASB, suggested to Mrs. Kim to have a band of play, Mexican music, at a dance. Some more Mexican kids who go to my school felt welcomed, but Mrs. Kim said, "This is not Mexico." I took a lot of offense to this because, as a hard-working student, I feel that my school doesn't do much at the high school events for Hispanics. She always complains that students don't go to the school dances, but this is the very reason why many of us don't go. We simply feel excluded, and since she's the person in charge of the events, you'd think she'd listen to us. Not only that, I've seen some of her Facebook posts, and they just don't sit right with me. Teachers tell us to be careful about what we post online, but they're the same teachers who post racist things online. The district should definitely look into her. How is she in charge of teaching students when she acts like a kid herself? Shandon Hills, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Welch tackled a black student in the hallway. And just one second, I'm going to have Nicole take over for a moment. Good evening. This is Nicole. Okay, um, next comment. I was a CAPS youth leader, and it was homework rotation with my students. As I was helping them, they mentioned they were too scared to ask their teacher for help because he constantly made them feel dumb. Concerned, I wrote his name down. Although it didn't stop there, the students continued to speak on that teacher that he would pick up the students and put them in the trash can, how he would always be touching the girls' hair, especially if they had braids. I was writing everything down, from their stories to their names, when it was time to rotate our kids. I don't remember if it was a student who was going home or if it was my students being rotated to the cafeteria that they let Mrs. Griggs know what they were telling me. Mrs. Griggs ran into my classroom and began to scream at me in front of the students. "What do you are doing?" She was furious at me saying that these students lie a lot. You can't trust what they say, and that I have no idea what I'm getting myself into, and that the teacher would never do such a thing. He's been a longtime friend of hers. I calmly just showed her my notes of the stories these students were telling me. She mentioned that good students lose their job over accusations like this one. Chandler Greeno, then the CAPS site lead, talked to me at the end of the day saying, "I do not want to get involved by accusing this teacher of the things he did to listen to Mrs. Griggs." But the thing is, children do not lie when it comes to these things. Their minds are too innocent to accuse a teacher of these things. I believe they were second or third graders. Why would they lie? I am a mandated reporter, and when I tried to report, they forced me to stay quiet. While working in a program linked with the school, a student confided in me that his teacher, the same class that I pulled him out of, was a racist. I asked him what made him think that. The student told me that he typically doesn't do much work in class, but one day, the teacher asked him where he lived, the exact address, and pulled up his house on Google Maps. The teacher then proceeded, in front of the whole class with the projector on, to point to his house and say, "This is the house you want in your future?" That stuck with me and will forever stick with me. People need to understand that this does still happen in our schools. We shouldn't be putting students down in any way. We need to listen to our students, hear their stories and their voices. But we also need to give them not only the space to do it, but take action once they share their stories. It's hard because we all know how hard it is to fire a teacher. I personally believe that there needs to be a review board. Teachers don't have to be evaluated as often once they are tenured. And even if they are evaluated, their principals pass them with flying colors. Our kids deserve better. Sorry. Okay, next comment. Mrs. Bowman always made sure she treated colored students differently in multiple occasions. She was racist toward other students and myself. One day specifically, she separated the class from colored students who she felt were going to be trouble to the back, which included myself and the kids she favored, who were light-skinned and white to the front. She's always made racial slurs, and she also tried to fail me without even looking at my actual assignments just because of skin. She till, still this day, she is harassing me and other students on Facebook, and I will gladly testify because she, along with Ms. Embriani, should not be allowed to be teaching at the school. Ms. Embriani has also said things to students such as racial slurs, and it's unacceptable. Feel free to reach out to me. I will gladly be there and stand for what's right, as I was the mayor of Cardinal City for my senior year of high school in two thousand and fourteen. And this is way overdue. I tried telling and speaking with Ms. Rodriguez about this back at that time, and she, along with other staff members, ignored us. They are crooked and don't care about students. It's time to make it right. The next comment is regarding Muskaway Elementary in two thousand and six. Says Jennifer. Jennifer was a CAPS employee, and I volunteered at Muskaway after I graduated sixth grade. She was upset that I was able to volunteer there, and her little sister had to get approval from the district, but her little sister was trying to get paid. I was just volunteering there. She was telling me it wasn't fair that I got to be there, and she told me, "It's fine. They only let me volunteer at Muskaway because they knew I'll be sixteen and pregnant. Anyways, because I'll only be going for laying on my back." I complained, and they made me stop volunteering there instead of removing her. Uh, next comment is regarding Cajon, two thousand and eighteen. Sokowitz. He called me a spic, derogatory to Mexicans. Next comment is regarding the Public Safety Academy from two thousand and thirteen, excuse me, to two thousand and fifteen, regarding Kathy Toy. Says, "Please describe the event in as much detail as you remember." Kathy Toy, the school principal at that time, suspended me from school for two days because, according to her, I had been skipping after-school formation to go behind the gym building to kiss boys. She brought me into her office and claimed to know for a fact it was me and said that an unnamed witness can say it was me when she, along with the school faculty, was aware that due to my mother's work schedule, I was not able to go after-school formation and had to go automatically home as soon as the final class of the day was dismissed. My own mother even provided an alibi for me, reminding her that I do not stay for after-school formation because I always get picked up at two-ten PM on the dot by my mother. The fact that I was even able to be allowed to go home right away was discussed with all school faculty, even in the presence on Kathy Toy. It was even written in my school file that I was allowed to go home as soon as the final class was dismissed and not stay for afternoon formation like it was for everyone else. I had not previously ever been suspended before. I was a straight-A student with no problems with any teacher. I was made felt that I was constantly being targeted by Kathy Toy because of my ethnicity. There was another incident a few months afterwards where Kathy Toy pulled me and gave me detention and made me salute in front of the entire school during morning formation because I was not saluting the previous morning formation. Again, my mother had informed the front office and asked for a faculty meeting to notify them that, due to our religion, I could not salute during formation, a fact that, again, Kathy Toy was made aware of. Even when Kathy Toy told me to go to the front of the school, informed her of my reasoning, and told her to check my student file for the notation, Kathy Toy ignored it and proceeded. When I made aware to my mother about the saluting incident in front of the school brought on by Kathy Toy, my mother asked to speak to the school's counselor, Ms. Chamberlain, with myself present and Kathy Toy present. My mother made it clear that- My mother made it clear that both my mother and I felt that we were being discriminated by Kathy Toy and singled out due to our ethnicity and used any excuse to try to single me out. Kathy Toy used the excuse that she did not know I couldn't salute during formation. And my mother reiterated to Kathy Toy that she was present when she had notified the school and had it again written in my student file so that no disciplinary action would be taken on me over it. Even the counselor, Ms. Chamberlain, pulled my student file and seen the notation about it in there and again showed Kathy Toy. Kathy Toy went silent and didn't offer an apology and just called me a liar about not telling her about the note on my file and walked out of the room. After that incident, my mother switched me schools. Because of that incident, I had felt that no matter how much I stood up for myself, I was still made to feel little. I also witnessed her discriminate against other Mexican and black students. Next comment is regarding Eric Jinks and Jeffrey Habel in two thousand and fifteen. During my junior year of high school, Eric Jinks made multiple comments to myself and other Latinx students about her education levels and intelligence. As an AP English literature teacher, he was subpar at best, but knowing he had to teach students who already had a socioeconomic disadvantage in school, he used a language that was not appropriate for his audience. To his teacher-age student, he would constantly remark about how his students who would sometimes bring lunch to eat such as traditional Latinx students, I'm sorry, dishes such as tamales, needed to stop bringing their food into his classroom. Jeffrey Habel also had an investigation launched against him in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year for various discriminatory and derogatory remarks toward his black and Latinx students. During my junior year, Jeffrey Habel remarked that he had met all of the students' parents except mine. I told him that my father works, but he had met my mother already. Jeffrey Habel then remarked, in front of my Spanish-speaking mother, yeah, but I meant when, am I going to speak to a parent that actually speaks English? This hit very close to home because I acted as a translator for their conversations and nor did I have the luxury of having my working father take time off to come help at my school events. He made very, various derogatory comments such as make sure you get here on time and not Mexican time and even disclosed his political preference to a majority of students that belonged to a minority group. There was an investigation of his behavior, but a Royal Valley administration deemed his behavior acceptable and allowed him to continue with his teaching position. As students were subjected to microaggressions and offensive comments that had we made toward him would have gotten suspended or expelled, the behaviors exhibited by Eric Jinks, who now works at Indian Springs High School and Jeffrey Habel, who now works at King Middle School, are completely and totally unacceptable. The population at all three schools, Royal Valley High School, Indian Springs High School, and King Middle School are minority students. And having them experience discrimination due to their race and ethnicity in a learning environment and impressional ages is unacceptable. The next comment is regarding Shannon Bowman. I had for economic senior year and tended to do bad one, a few of her tests. However, I tried my hardest with the homework and got told in front of my group I cheated on the homework since I didn't do so well on the test. I have tended to have issues taking tests. Next comment regarding Ms. Bowman, two thousand nineteen. She claimed that because I was Mexican, I would not be successful, then shamed me for dating someone who was black, saying I needed to stick to my own race. The next comment regarding Curtis, two thousand eighteen, Mr. Tellier. Mr. Tellier was teaching during two thousand nine for ELA at San Bernardino High School. He eventually got moved to a different grade. In two thousand and eighteen, I met him at Curtis. I was a resident sub and was assigned to a seventh-grade ELA class at the beginning of the year. My students were great and we were all pretty emotional when we learned that Mr. Tellier would be taking over. I had minor behavioral issues when I was assigned to his class. After I heard from mostly my black students that they were miserable with the changes. Eventually, the teacher stopped showing up and I returned to sub for the class. On my first day back, I noticed that all of the black students were grouped in the back. From my understanding, he placed students he deemed troubled in the back because he considered it stressful to have them in the front. When I met them at the beginning of the year, many of my students were motivated. However, when I returned, I noticed that many of the students who were placed in the back began receiving low levels and other consequences. While I am not sure as to what happened when I was gone, it was not okay with the seating arrangement and the fact that he decided to group all of the black students and place them in back of the classroom. From my understanding, he was let go because he missed too many dates. Next comment is two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, um, regarding Ms. Bowman. During my senior year, when I was the president of a club that Ms. Bowman was an advisor for, she would constantly compare me to a previous president who was white and would yell at me whenever I asked for any help in filling out forms that were necessary for the club. She would make passive-aggressive remarks about how the previous white president never needed any help, and she would occasionally make derogatory remarks about brown classmates, stating that they were bad influences. The next comment is regarding San Bernardino High School, two thousand sixteen, Mrs. Perez. This happened in numerous occasions during the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Mrs. Perez, the calculus teacher at the time, would make sexual and inappropriate jokes exclusively to a black male student. These jokes often included talking about bananas and how it reminded her of the student. And when he would look at her, she would try to cover it up and say that it's because he was always eating bananas. This was four years ago, so I don't exactly remember the jokes, but I do remember them being extremely inappropriate, and I only ever heard them directed towards this student. The next comment is regarding Cypress Elementary, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, uh, regarding Sandy. Student was drinking water after recess bell rang. S. Called on student to return to his line. Student continued to drink water. S. Proceeds to grab student by the arm and forcibly remove him while yelling at a close proximity to his face. The next comment, San Bernardino High, two thousand seventeen, uh, Corrigliano Science Teacher. Would send students to the back and call that area the peanut gallery, a racial term used during segregation. The next comment is regarding San Bernardino High School, two thousand eighteen, John Hinkleman. Always made us black students feel as if we were incapable of being successful in life by making a joke out of our mistakes and aspirations. He also always showed favoritism when it came to his white students, spoke highly of them, and also used them to throw in our faces when we made mistakes. Hinkleman also used to gossip and talk badly about a black student, uh, with the last name which has been redacted. The next comment is regarding Pacific High School, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Ms. Gregory. She has many, many events to where she's been completely unfair to her students of color. She hasn't told a black student who was asking for help because she refused to help him already to shut up and stop talking about Kool-Aid and chicken. She told an only Spanish-speaking student to shut up and speak English here. She told me that because I'm Hispanic, I won't mount up to anything and need to show her respect, especially since I'm a very light-skinned Salvadorian, and she assumed I was white until she heard me say I was that and completely treated me differently since. She told my friend, who is a dark Hispanic, that she could not turn in work, and she even wrote it on her notes that she was the only one not allowed. The list goes on. She only gave privilege to the white students because before, as I mentioned, she thought I was white. But then, when she found out I was Hispanic, she completely changed towards me. The area where Pacific is, isn't in the nicest areas, but she would constantly tell us we will never mount to anything because we are too poor to succeed and nobody would want to hire us. She caused me extreme mental issues considering I am a Hispanic trans male dealing with enough as it is, who didn't deserve to be torn down how I was and see my friends torn down as well. She wrote me one referral because I checked my phone while she was screaming at the class at how we think she's a, and I quote, "a dumbass." So I checked my phone for the time because I have very high levels of anxiety and needed to track down when my chest gets to a freezing point of where I cannot breathe. And she started personally yelling at me to not record her for evidence of this. And I, defending myself by saying, I am not the reason you are screaming and unhappy with the class and you should not be targeting me. After the class, I had to throw up horribly because my chest felt like I was going rock explode because of her. And I'm not a stupid kid either. I passed physics with a B both semesters, so you can only imagine how she treated her students who weren't passing. Were faculty, staff, parents aware that this happened? Yes, they did absolutely nothing about it. Dr. Kay is the vice principal at Pacific High School, and he constantly defended her, saying that she didn't, didn't nothing, and there are students who still are getting tortured by her. She has a damn bird for crying out loud, and she's the only one allowed on campus to have a pet because she's white. The next comment is regarding Santo Strica, two thousand one. As a principal, she was very hard on kids of color, outright blatant racist. She allowed teachers to treat kids of color harshly. During a school assembly, Trica and her VP at the time physically grabbed a black student and drug them from the ceremony. My mother witnessed it and complained to the district multiple times. She was not punished. My mother and other parents went to the district. Nothing happened. Eventually, she was transferred to another school. Next comment, uh, regarding San G, two thousand sixteen, Kayler. While teaching at San G High, he called a student the N-word, but instead of being fired, he was moved to Indian Springs and still coached at San G. Next comment, San Bernardino High School, two thousand nineteen, Ms. Bowman. She stereotypes me for looking Mexican. Next comment, San Gorgonio High School, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, Adrian Villalobos. This teacher has gotten my friend, who happens to be African-American, a green beanie because he said it reminded him of a watermelon. And he's called me personally a dirty Chinese person in Spanish. The next comment is regarding San Bernardino High School, twenty twenty, Kim Embryani. Kim has a series of posts on her Facebook suggesting George Floyd deserved what happened to him and that white privilege does not exist, and it is used as an excuse to victimize the blacks, black community. This is alarming as a POC because I have had Embrawny in the past and will have her again next year. Her comments on the BLM movement are disturbing to be and a lot of my peers. And last comment is regarding San Bernardino High School, Ms. Bowman. They said that Mrs. Beaumont said that they wouldn't never amount to be anything like their parents and said that she would make racist remarks, a Latinx, this was discussed about in front of Mrs. Parker Drama Teacher. And that concludes those comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the comments. And I wanna say, especially to the, to the, our viewing audience and everyone, that we take all of our public comments very seriously. We, we say that on other times, and at this time, there is no difference. Um, I know, Dr. Volkmer, you're going to, there are many in there that, there is some contact, con, um, information there. While unfortunately on the others that we don't have contact information, but these things will have to be looked into. I, I want the, uh, also the viewing audience to know. We passed the resolution some, a few weeks ago. We immediately said that we're going to work on policies that will point to not having this type of environment is unacceptable in any way, and we will look into everything that has been presented to us tonight. But I wanna also just remind the audience that we have three of our board members that sit on that policy committee. They have started already. This is a primary at the top of the list, and they're scheduled to meet again so that they can then come back and inform us as the rest of the board of the direction that we will be taking around racism. And so, I, I, I know the board is listening, taking notes. We'll be getting with Dr. Volkmer as well as we carve through, um, categorizing all of the information that was shared tonight. It was a lot. However, again, to reassure you, this is nothing that we take lightly at all. We do not take that lightly at all. And so, again, Dr. Volkmer, I will be getting with you as well as the board president, and then we will be getting together with the policy committee to set up reoccurring dates because I think there, you know, I know that there's one up and coming, but I think there needs to really be a schedule set because we do have a lot of other items that are also on there. But I believe the board will agree with me that this rises to the top of, of the list and is at the top of the list and has been. And we know a resolution was important, but this board takes this into a policy. We're beyond just talking about it or writing about it. It is in policy because we want everyone to know that, we want everybody to be aware of what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. We're here to serve kids. We're here to serve families, and we're here to do it right. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that in the meantime, um, if Harold can look into regarding the social media aspect. I know there was several comments regarding social media and what are those implement, like implications, um, for our employees as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that is something we've been in discussions with, so they're looking at the language on that as well. All right, um, Dr. Flores?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment also to follow what, uh, Ms., um, Rosales Medina just said. Uh, I do believe we pass policy uh, for our employees, uh, in terms of their posting on social media. And I, uh, I would like to return and look at that, uh, policy as well because there are consequences. Uh, we do not permit bullying, uh, uh, racist or, uh, anti-bias, uh, posts, I believe. And I forget what the other ones were, but I, I'd like to bring that policy up as well and look at it, uh, policy board members. Um, I, I would like us to look at that. And also, I, I'm reading a, a new book by Dr. Ibram Kendi, and, uh, it's very, very, um, foundational in terms of creating anti-racist policies. And, uh, I, I think not only do we have to create anti-racist policies, but anti-bias ethnic policies, uh, also in terms of gender, uh, and LBGQ as well. Uh, because they are harmful. And we, and, and it speaks to providing a safe environment, a safe environment for all our students and, um, and so forth. Just an aside, I used to get those types of comments, some of those comments, uh, you know, you're a Mexican. Uh, I don't think that you'll, uh, be very successful or even be able to go to college. But here I am, you know, after a forty-year, uh, career with a PhD. And if I would have listened to those teachers and those counselors that, uh, you know, put me down, I, I wouldn't be where I am today. So, um, it's still real. And, um, you know, and, um, everyone, our kids as well, our employees, our parents, every, all of us have to be cognizant of being more respectful, being more caring, more kind, and, uh, you know, to each other. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, um, policy committee, again, you'll be getting back to us, and we appreciate it and appreciate the attention to the district. We are now moving to-
Madam President?
I'm sorry?
This is Karen. I still have twenty-one more public comments to read.
I'm sorry, when she said I'm done, I thought it was done.
No, 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 I still have some more, okay?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, this is from, uh, an anonymous.
Can I ask a question about the comments? The, the, when you say the anonymous, they were submitted on the, um, the online, um-
The public comment form, yes, online.
Yes.
And, and does it get, does it give direction that, um, if you're anonymous, but you're the same anonymous person? That it counts as one person? The same person? And they get five minutes?
Um, I'm so, I'm so sorry, I don't, I don't-
Are you able to tell if it came from one?
No, you can't, you can't tell. They just get submitted and, you know, there could be twenty, thirty, you know, anonymous, it could have been one person resubmitting, you know, but they were all different. Most of them were all different sites and people, so we assume they were all separate.
Individually, okay.
Right.
Right. Yeah. Thank you. Go ahead, Karen.
Okay, thanks. All right, um, as you may or may not know, we have several special education students working in the community who are still attending a comprehensive high school or are in post-secondary programs. A critical component of their education and development is work and independent living skills training, both of which are satisfied by their off-campus work experience. This includes on-the-job- This includes on-the-job training at local businesses, nonprofit centers and S B C U S D sites as well. With plans being created for the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We have heard no mention of what will be done for this particular group of students. I ask now, what provisions will be made in regard to students with special needs? Who need to continue their community-based education without delays? Would it also make sense that these students work for the district, fulfilling much-needed duties at various sites? They are more than capable and have acquired the necessary employment, employment skills to be successful. These tasks could, could include sanitation, clerical, janitorial, landscaping, food service and teacher assistant work as well. Thank you for your time and consideration. This is from an educator. As an educator, I am deeply concerned about what is happening with other districts around us. I am proud that S B C U S D is putting the lives of the students and staff first. I am a believer that distance education can work. I am committed to my students and will do whatever is necessary to give them a quality education. With this in mind, I am also concerned about the health and safety of my young children, both under two years of age. While looking for childcare, I have found a few things concerning. I have found that most childcare givers have drastically raised prices due to cuts they had to make because of the coronavirus. The cost would be over six hundred dollars a week for both children. This is a cost I could not bear. I asked the board to consider creating an employee childcare at various school sites for staff that is affordable and safe. How am I to teach live for several hours, several hours a day when I can no longer afford childcare? With this in mind, I am very concerned about sending my children anywhere for care. Especially since the governor is recently closing the county back down and because schools can't even open up. If it's not safe to open a school, then is it safe for me to send my infant and toddler to care? I know the situation is not unique and many people are facing similar situations. But I ask the board to take a humanistic approach when negotiating. Thank you. This is from Amber Marie Vito. She's an S B C U S D teacher. As a S B C U S D educator, I have taken the opportunity to not only stay up to date on your district's. Contemplations and decisions in regards to next school year, but others as well. Many districts are exploring multiple innovative ideas in terms of keeping our scholars safe and educated. Due to our diversity in opinions throughout our many families and employees. I'd like to request that the district considers taking action in the form of multiple choices. Is there a way in which we might be able to choose between returning to campus or distance learning? This way, each family and teacher can make decisions based on their individual best interest. Although we are in fact suffering through this pandemic, it is important that we keep moving. These scholars are losing their education and their academic potential along with it. I will be teaching kindergarten this upcoming school year and I fear I won't be able to truly make the best possible impact on my scholars' lives. As I previously have. I didn't become a teacher for the money and the fame. I became a teacher to make a difference and a difference can't be truly made while I hide behind a screen. This is from another teacher. I am, I am concerned with childcare issues if we do decide to offer different times and adjusted schedules. This is from another teacher. Many school districts in California are offering free or low-cost childcare to employees. Will San Bernardino City School District be following in these steps? Have low-cost childcare, having low-cost childcare would alleviate many of the scheduling concerns and the cost of daycare. Many facilities have been forced to raise the cost of childcare because of the loss of revenue during closures. Making it very unaffordable for working-class families, including your teachers. Uh, this is from a parent guardian. Um, will high schools be able to have drive-through registrations? This is from Shay Lynn Massey. Many are talking about toilet paper shortages during the COVID nineteen crisis. Oh, excuse me, I forgot to say she is a member of the Free the Period California Coalition. Many are talking about toilet paper shortages during the COVID nineteen crisis. But no one is talking about the equal need for menstrual products due to the stigma and shame around it. This is an issue of reproductive and gender justice. Free the Period California is asking for school districts to ensure that they are accountable. For providing menstrual products for students as is required by California state law, A B ten. Many districts have summer meal service sites and school year meal provision sites during the pandemic. We ask that menstrual products are provided at these sites as they are a necessity for students. And many face barriers to accessing these products during this pandemic. There may be supplies sitting unused due to campus closures. Menstruating students of all ages face issues due to a lack of access to menstrual products. Periods can start as early as third grade, a time when students are the most vulnerable to period shaming from peers. And many do not have a trusted adult they can ask to help them with menstrual healthcare. We urge you to distribute these products to help the students in your district fulfill this basic need. This is from a parent. Thank you for choosing to keep us in distance learning. I appreciate that you are putting, putting the health and safety of my family first. This is from a city community member. During this time of a pandemic and several budget cuts, why would the board approve a two percent increase for management? And not insist that classified personnel receive an increase as well? In light of Classified Employee Appreciation Day just recently passing. Is this an indication of how much the board values the frontline responders during the COVID nineteen crisis? M and O employees, nutrition services and site custodians. Have been risking their lives daily to help ensure the safety of district personnel and students. You just recently approved the budget for this new fiscal year. How could you not show support for the classified staff? If the classified staff is not to receive an increase for whatever reason, then neither should management. Due to the pandemic, inflation has made it difficult to be able to continue to provide for our families. Please, Board of Education, do not allow your classified employees to be ignored. This is from Lori Para, a parent. I just have three questions to ask. One, just recently, parents received a survey of how we would like our kids to attend this coming two thousand twenty-one school year. But parents should also hear about what survey questions were asked to district teachers. So we can see the whole pie of parents and teachers during board meetings. Number two, say district does decide to open up school sites once they feel it's safe and have all the equipment at each school site. Can you give us more of a detail of how the day would look like, would look like in a hybrid class setting? Example, how many student desks will fit in a classroom if teachers have twenty-eight to thirty students? Are secondary teachers going to be the ones rotating for each subject or will students be the ones rotating? And if a teacher or student catches the COVID nineteen at school? Will school shut down or will the students and teachers that were in the same class have to quarantine for fourteen days? I feel parents and teachers need more answers so we have a better understanding of what a hybrid class setting would look like. Three, lastly, I think it would be beneficial if each school's websites would post. Post up their school site council meeting agendas on their front page, just in case a parent couldn't attend the meeting. Agendas would give parents time to review before the next meeting. Or they would be able to see where the LCAP money is being used. Thank you for your time. This is from Heidi McQueen. She's an S B C U S D teacher. Thank you for all you are doing. We know this is a daily, ongoing challenge. On behalf of many teachers at my school site, I am asking that teachers are given the Teaching Guidelines to Distance Learning. Or D L sooner rather than later. Most teachers plan weeks, if not months ahead of time before the school year starts. And not knowing these as of now is an added stress. We would like to know specific timeframes for, one, D L instruction. Does this, does this mean six hours on Google meets? Can we teach small groups? Does it have to be whole groups or giving feedback? Grading, office hours, what is and isn't allowed? Two, curriculum pacing for D L instruction. Are there certain minutes for subjects? How and when are teachers supposed to assess individual students? We need assessments to plan instruction based on need. Again, grading informal and informal assessments to check for understanding. Three, getting students the materials like practice pages, paper and pencils. They need to start the D L school year, especially for TK, Kinder and First Grade. Who may not be familiar with technology, words, letters, math, writing and/or a lot of other things. This is just to name a few to get the year started. This doesn't even take into consideration those teachers with children. And who have to make accommodations for that. We want to know to have consistency amongst grade levels, site levels and district levels. We want to give our kids the best possible education we can. And preparing for that is urgent. Thank you. This is from a teacher who says they have students in the district. I am a teacher in the district and have three comments. One, at the last board meeting, Mr. Tillman made a comment to see if anyone had surveyed the teachers to see if they wanted to go back to their school site. Dr. Minara said not yet, but they will send out a survey. Teachers did get the survey, but it said, can you physically go back to work? I'm sure ninety percent plus can physically go into work. But I'm sure at least eighty percent plus don't feel safe to go back. I don't appreciate how they, whoever came up with the survey. Are trying to skew the numbers to show the board that teachers can come back. Of course, most of us can come back, but most of us don't feel safe enough to go back to work physically. This is a deadly disease. Two, at that parent meeting last week, which was to answer questions from our community, a question was asked by a parent, asked to. If teachers will rotate classrooms so the students do not have to move around the school. Mr. Holderson said they are still looking at that. I hope they saw and the board knows that there were three teachers in Arizona who shared a classroom for summer school. And all three teachers got infected with COVID and one of them died. I hope whoever makes these decisions knows that it is not just students' lives we are dealing with. It's the lives of everyone on each campus, as well as their family and loved ones at home. No one should be allowed on any school campus until there are at least a vaccine, a vaccine. Three, Mr. Vatir said the stuff we ordered for school safety is on back order. When will we get all the P P Es? Mr. Tillman asked, what are those dates for the back-ordered items? And Mr. Vatir said he will know by the end of the week, July twelfth. So when will we get all of our P P Es? Four cloth faith, four cloth face coverings is no way near enough, especially when most students will not wash them daily. This is anonymous.
I just wanted to make a comment. I had put there for a comment just really quickly. I just want to note that I did, um, pay attention to that part where the fiscally, if they are able to report to work fiscally. I mean, sorry, physically. And, um, I do plan on asking that question later on. Just to let her know that I was able to note that.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, this is, as a concerned school bus driver for your district. What will be the consequences once we return for those students that A, refuse to wear masks while onboard the bus? B, call for sneeze, sneeze on the driver's or attendant's face on purpose. I'm asking because the district is very lax on student consequences. I have written multiple high-level referrals for the same students and transportation doesn't do anything about it. Their response is, it's out of our hands. It's up to the school administrator's discretion for student consequence. Even with video proof, there is no consequence for these students misbehaving. Uh, this is anonymous from a parent. The district needs to provide better technical assistance for the upcoming school year to be held on a distance learning basis. There should be multiple contacts in the event families are having technical difficulties with devices. Every school should have office hours where calls are being accepted a few times a week. It was terrible needing assistance and not being able to get in touch with anyone from the district or the school. It's from a district employee. As an employee of the district, it's been my experience that most custodians only vacuum rooms and provide paper towels once a week. I don't know if this is due to their other duties and responsibilities, but it's been our reality. How are you as a district going to make sure proper sanitation is taking place daily? Teachers have always been the ones cleaning the sink, dusting and cleaning high-traffic areas. I am concerned that rooms won't get sanitized, won't be getting sanitized thoroughly or daily. It's from a concerned employee. With the surge in COVID nineteen and our return to work, I am hoping you really do have tracking practices in place. A concern, a concern I have is if we have an employee today. That travels as part of their work routine to sites and departments such as maintenance operations, psychologists or nurses. That, that there is a tracking of all the rooms and areas they come in contact with. How are they communicating that they stopped by this site today and went to rooms A, B and C? Office staff is still on break. How are they currently communicating to sites that they were visited? And what functions were performed and who they spoke to? Time arrived and time left. What areas they came in contact with that need to be treated? Sites and departments should always be made aware when someone from off-campus will be visiting their site and the purpose. What about outside vendors on campus? Additionally, for special ed staff that will need to physically come in contact with students because it is required at times. Are you going to be providing this specific staff with, with N ninety-five masks? Thank you as well. Oh, and thank you as we all wish to be safe during these times. Okay, this one is from. Mr. Alfredo Aguero. I want, I want to ask that my comments be translated into English. The reason for reading them in Spanish is because our Spanish-speaking community does not participate because it does not know or understand what is being said in these meetings. My name is Alfredo Aguero and I am a community organizer in the area of special education in the inland empire. I want to ask you to stop using the COVID nineteen pandemic problem as an excuse for the reason that in other meetings. Such as that of the Board of Directors on six sixteen, six thirty, where my comments were not read. Unfortunately, the S B C U S D district does not give confirmation of receipt of public comments. First of all, I want to let you know that I disagree with the annual budget plan. I want to ask you to reconsider and not approve, approve of continuing the contract. With the law firms that you use against parents and special education students. I also want to tell you that whatever amount of money that is in your budgets for expenses with the San Bernardino County Police Department. Be reconsidered because I think like many of those who commented in the past meeting. That this money can be used in support programs and/or alternative programs for students who are at risk of entering the court system. The school-to-prison pipeline. Again, I want to mention that it is a necessity that we are informed and parents of children with special needs are told, what is the reason? For spending so much money from the budget of the S E L P A, Special Education Departments in law firms? It is money, it is money that would be best used to provide services to special education students. Directly and not to pay for attorneys who are hired by the district. To, to deny the services and supports that special education students need and/or require. I want to make it clear that these are services that many or most of the time, they are recommendations made by independent evaluators. Just to give an example, because I do not understand how the. Individualized Education Program, I E P team authorizes independent evaluations. Evaluations that are not cheap since they can cost several thousands of dollars. And that the recommendations given by the evaluators are denied to the students by the same members of the I E P team that authorize them. Another thing is that lawyers are also used to intimidate and retaliate against the parents of these students. Just for advocating for their children, just as they did with me. Please stop using public money for unnecessary expenses. There are many things that our children with different abilities need and that you can grant. You can enable these students to have a decent, independent life after we as parents stop being next to them. That the truth is what each of us as parents wants for our children. I must mention that the services or supports that students need are much cheaper than what they spend on litigating to deny these services. Lastly, I let you know that I do not agree with the way parents are notified to participate in the annual budget meetings. And all other meetings in general, C A C, D LAC. Because the way they do it is in order that the parents do not find out and thus be able to do or say what the administrators want. It is a group of parents who agree with the heads of the Department of Special Education. And they are the only ones who find out about these meetings. Thank you, and I hope that we can work together to make positive changes in these issues that are so important to us as parents. This comment is from a parent and teacher. Why is S B C U S D continuing to push forward with distance learning without a unified online learning platform? The achievement is, the achievement is already high in San Bernardino City and with this model, it will continue to grow. Students in the same household and same grade, grade level will have different teachers. Who will either have an amazing online component while, while the other teacher will just assign worksheets. This was experienced by many in the short period of online learning. With this type of experience, students will just not show up online. The worst thing you as a board could have done was let a strong, innovative leader. Like Dr. Marsden leave and not hire a permanent superintendent during this time of crisis. That was a lack of judgment on your part. You have failed us, the election. The election is coming up and I hope there is a significant change. Ms. Medina has brought up teachers needing access to their classrooms and the flexibility to teach from their classrooms, only that teacher being in the classroom. But the district's assistant superintendent leading this effort has ignored this recommendation on every level. Shameful. Do better, SBCUSD. You are so far behind. Ask for help if you need it. People are willing to step in. This is from Cindy, community member. I would like for the community to be aware that there are many teachers in this district who are compassionate and committed to standing up against hate and racism. They are dedicated to learning and unlearning in order to adapt to our changing world and better serve the children of this city. And this district is committed to keeping them silent and unsupported. Here is what we know. Racism isn't just, I hate you because of your skin color. It's supporting deportation. It's sneakily moving money from the budget to further police children instead of providing resources. It's not believing every human deserves access to quality medical care. It's thinking, I'm an educated adult, so my views are objective and right. Speak to me like the Queen of England or your point is invalid. It's telling your students that they will only get into college because of affirmative action. It's believing that any brown kid taking up space somewhere is keeping qualified people out. It's being committed to remaining ignorant on things you don't understand, like when you guys acted like there was no possible way to understand what is meant when people say abolish police. Racism has been studied again and again. The effects of racism have been talked about again and again. A lot of you and a lot of the teachers you employ have the same tired and harmful beliefs as any old blatant racist from the 50s. You're just better at being polite about it. Your teachers, administration and students will share their stories of racism today. Stories that took place on your campuses at the hands of your teachers. The goal is to try to make you understand that now is the time to change everything. Stop protecting racist teachers. Stop silencing the ones who care about humanity and give them the power, protection and resources to help our kids. Change your system so we don't have to spend our time outside of work performing this free labor for you. There will be a lot of mention of teachers using Facebook to spread hateful and tone deaf sentiments. The solution to this isn't encouraging your teachers to stay off of Facebook, by the way. Their beliefs are dangerous and do not belong in our classrooms. We want the real problems to be addressed, not covered up. This is from a parent and district employee. As a parent of this district and an employee, I do support hybrid learning for the 2020-21 school year. However, I do ask that teachers are held to a higher standard for the students this year. I have two students at Cypress and my son's third grade teacher was excellent. She met with them every day through Google Classroom and answered questions and was patient. However, my daughter's fourth grade teacher was not as great. The fourth grade teacher would assign work to the kids and they would have to complete with no instructions and were required to reach out to the teacher if they needed help. The teacher was only available one hour a day for questions, but it was for the entire classroom. The teacher also asked students not to video call because it would slow down their computer, so it was never face to face on the computer. When distance learning continues, please hold all teachers responsible and have them meet with the kids daily and have them actually teach the students so they understand and not just assign work. Thank you for your time. And the last comment is from Cheryl Richardson. She's a union rep. I am submitting the statement on behalf of the many dedicated staff members that serve in this socio-economically deprived community that encompasses Del Vallejo Leadership and STEAM Academy School. Student safety, emotional, social and academic success are all pillars that staff has worked so vigorously to erect upon the foundation of making hope happen for all SBCU students in general, in particular for the students living in the communities surrounding our school. We have worked hard alongside this board to become a school of choice. When the district chose to officially change the school's name, a commitment was made, a commitment that the district must not break. With promises from our leaders to finally invest in the students and community we serve, money was used from our already stretched school budget to pin a mural announcing not only our new name, but also our new identity, Del Vallejo Leadership and STEAM Academy 2021. This board has chosen to put Savant Preparatory Business Academy at Del Vallejo Leadership and STEAM Academy. Not only did this board agree to this during our change into a school of choice, but at the end of the school year during a pandemic as well. Did these parents not deserve to know the potential risk to their own children by adding upward to 120-plus additional bodies to the campus during a pandemic? We are public servants and the health, welfare and safety of those we serve are paramount. Del Vallejo Leadership and STEAM Academy is only able to accommodate no more than 12 students per class in order to social distance according to the guidelines. The CDC found that COVID-19 patients aged 16 years, where only 41.5% had fever, 48.5% had cough and 1.8% were admitted to an ICU. These statistics must be addressed since the district and the board has chosen to put an extra 120 students on our campus, who could be asymptomatic. Even with the extreme precautions, COVID-19 could still put every staff member at risk. Because of the age of Savant students, the higher the transmission to adults. These students will have no choice but to interact with Savant students as the district has said the campus will be commingled. In the United States, 2% of confirmed cases of COVID-19 were among 10-year-old students, which is the very population Savant serves. Even with no pandemic, elementary students and middle school students are separated for a reason. The social and emotional levels for the students at Del Vallejo, as well as the students at Savant, should be taken into consideration. At this time, Savant should be allowed to run their school. The district has not given sufficient thought into Ingram Elementary with 240 students or Anderson with zero students. Instead, this board voted for Del Vallejo with 652 projected students. I'm asking that the board find other measures to satisfy both schools. Thank you for your time. And that is all of our public comments.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate it and duly noted, Dr. Volkermer, you will move forward with the comments. All right, 7.0 reports and comments by union organization. 7.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. Are they on the line, Karen?
I believe so.
I'm here.
Okay, I can't see. There you are. Hello. All right.
Good evening, President Rogers, interim superintendent Volkermer, members of the board and cabinet. I'm Ashley Bidasalcala, president of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, and I am again speaking to you tonight on behalf of the 3,000 members of SBTA. First, I would like to thank the board for putting the safety and well-being of all our employees and students as your first priority in the courageous decision that you made several weeks ago to start the year in August with everyone in distance learning. Since you made that decision, many districts across California have followed suit, including the two largest districts in our state, Los Angeles Unified and San Diego Unified. It is still very concerning that since we last met, San Bernardino County is still on the state and federal watch list, with more businesses being closed again this week by the governor and the COVID-19 cases within the city and county continuing to rise as an alarming rate, including the number of positive cases in children. That number is now at 311 for the city of San Bernardino alone. The total for the county of children age zero to 19 is now close to 2,000 cases confirmed. Tonight, the district will be sharing survey data in which employees were asked if they would be able to physically report to work at this time. I want to caution the board that even though many are able to return, those that may be able may not be willing based on their family situations, their childcare situations and just their overall fear about this virus. I want to make it clear that due to the data that I just previously mentioned, it is still not safe for us to return to sites. It's extremely important for the district to continue to work in collaboration with our local public health department and we still have serious concerns about the availability in our county to have adequate testing and the capability of having contact tracing in place. As we have seen throughout the world, this is the only way to really bend the curve and get ahead of the spread of this virus. It is imperative that we are able to assure to our members that this district is continuing to make sound decisions based on science and data as each day new information comes out about how the virus spreads, transmits and the number of cases is still rising. SBTA would also like to take this moment to remind our district that we have an established process in our collective bargaining agreement that shall be adhered to given the matters that may be raised by the public. Article nine, citizens complaint procedure in our collective bargaining agreement outlines the process to be followed when citizens raise complaints. I know that both SBTA and the district are parties to this undertaking. We want our educators and our community to follow due process to ensure that rights are protected while also providing a safe and welcoming space where students and families are educated and respected. We hope that we draw on the courage needed at this time to do right by our educators and our community by adhering to the citizens complaint process and not making rash decisions in the moment without the proper time and investigation that any allegation or concern may have raised. Lastly, we hope that our educators and community members can come together and strengthen relationships to help all of us through this challenging time in our nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up, 7.2, California School Employees Association. Are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Could you?
Yes, we can.
Know who this is. Hey Glenn, hey Dan.
I know you.
Good. A good evening, Madam President and Board. My name is Ben Sagado. I'm currently the second VP of Chapter 183 CSEA. I would like to take the time to say thank you for your continued support of all our classified employees through these uncharted waters. And as an employee and minnow, I would thank you for taking our classified and family safety first before deadlines. It is very important to get the school ready before the start of the school year, but not at the cost of putting our classified workers in harm's way. We have faith that the school board will make the right decision. I will also like to take this time to thank Sandra Rodriguez for stepping up and helping out at these times. And she really stepped up to the plate. I heard this today and I think I would like to share it. Life is unpredictable. It can change things like the weather. What do you do when the weather changes? You dress accordingly. You do not waste time wishing for better weather because it will soon be bad enough. So what do you do when life changes unexpectedly? You take a deep breath, think positively and just keep living. And with that being said, I know that storms don't last long and with sunny days ahead, as long as we stick together, I think we will see the start of a better day. Thank you.
Thank you. 7.3, Communication Workers of America. There's no comments from them. All right, 7.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
Good evening, Madam President and board members and cabinet. This is POA President Daniel Arias. First and foremost, I want to take this time to thank the leadership of the district. Thank all you, all the board members for the hard work that you guys are doing. It's evident and even just watching you guys, you know, during the board meetings, some of you guys look really tired and I know you guys go on for hours and hours. That's not taking account, you know, during your days off, all the hard work that you guys are doing. So really, from the bottom of my heart, I really, you know, thank you guys. The POA appreciates you guys and the decision that you guys are making to make sure that we're all safe. With that being said, I also want to take this moment to just recognize the men and women from this department that continue to work hard day in and day out. You know, during the whole pandemic, since it started in March, I think we're one of the only departments that have, you know, stayed on working 24/7. And during the summertime, we can definitely see the increase in the crime that's happening on campus. So just want to give you guys an update on that. Our schools are being victimized from AC units that are being stolen, classrooms that are being burglarized and now a lot of the prostitution that's happening in some of our local schools like Jones Riley and Lincoln Elementary. Like I said, I'm very proud of the guys and the gals that are working. We've had two of our members contracted COVID-19. Since then, they have recovered, thank God. We have another officer who was assaulted during a burglary. He will be going into surgery next week, so our prayers go out to him. And I just want to let the community know that with officers that we have, you know, 16, 17 strong, we're out there doing our best to protect our students during the day and protect our district property during the nighttime. We've had suspects spit on some of our officers, throw up on them. However, they continue to show up to work day in and day out. So I just want to take this time to, you know, to applaud them. Their hard work, our leadership from the department, you know, our chief of police, our sergeants, we're all working together and we're doing our best to, you know, take care of all the district property and our students. It's just amazing how as the climate starts to go up, so does the crime. But like I said, we are being proactive during the day. We've had some arrests for sex offenders that are on campuses. As you guys know, you know, our schools are a part of the community, so some of our students, our kids, you know, they want to go out and play in the playground. However, there is people out there with bad intentions. But due to the great work and the proactivity of our officers, we have been able to make several arrests and we're going to continue to do so. We're committed to the district. We're committed to, you know, to our community members. We are from San Bernardino. It's, we don't know what tomorrow is going to bring. You know, we don't know what the future is going to look like. We're going through really, some really horrible and tough times. And I can only say, I really, I pray for all of you. I pray for this district, for our community that, you know, God, you know, provides, you know, good vision for us and that we're making the right decisions. And I just want to let you guys know that I love all of you and that I'm praying for you. I'm praying for, don't think it unnoticed. We appreciate you. I pray for you in Jesus's name, that you guys are covered and that you guys get the strength that you need and I appreciate it. Thank you guys for the time. And that is, they be blessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we are now moving into presentations. 8.1, Citizens Oversight Committee, 2019-2020 Annual Written Report, Business Services. Thank you so much, Ms. Harrison, for being here. I know it's been kind of a little toiling a little bit, but we appreciate you being here and we're going to turn it over to you. You can unmute yourself. I see yours with a mute. Can you hear me? It's still muted. You're still muted. Are you able to click on your unmute?
There, I think I'm muted.
Okay, there you go. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Yes, it's almost past my bedtime. But I thank you very much.
It's already past Danny's bedtime, Gloria.
But on behalf of the Oversight Committee, I wish to present to you briefly, because this is really, I'm assuming that you have received either electronically or in print, the annual report. And the annual report really gives you all the details that you need to see that the accomplishments of your facilities and the accomplishments that have been made in building through your bond measures and other funds. So your annual report will include all the finished projects, the current projects and future projects. And we have been, of course, like every other committee, have gone to either Zoom or like this one, the meetings, virtual meetings. And so the last field trip we were able to take before all of this restrictions came in, we got to see some of the progress made on the projects, especially, I would have to say, one of the projects that I would single out is a single entry project over at North Park Elementary. And that is being continued at other elementary schools. And I know that right now, some of the projects are going perhaps a little faster because there isn't anybody on campus and so they're able to work a little bit more without having to worry about staff being in their way. I will say that the employees, the construction sites, the people working on these projects are all following the the people working on these projects are all following the COVID requirements so that they are safe. And I know that, so that's being taken care of. The future projects, I know that they're planning and having to decide what to do because so much will depend on whether or not students are allowed back on campus, students and staff. That'll, that'll change the timeline a little bit. So if the students are not going back and they're all going to distance learning, they probably will be able to accomplish a little, some of the projects a little faster. The other item which the board should feel very proud of, and that is the audit report came back and you will probably be getting a report from the auditors themselves. But there were no findings. And one of the things that they commented about was that the staff was very cooperative and they they were able to get all the material they needed for their audit. And it was presented to our committee. And again, a clean audit and something I think that the district should be very proud of, that the money is being used the way it was meant to be used. The, I want to thank the staff for all the work. It's, I'm sure, I'm sure it's been difficult for everybody at every level. And difficult for you as a board, having to make new policies and make navigate this difficult time and try to do the best for everybody. But anyway, that's my report. It's very, I don't have any complaints other than we are having difficulty filling one of our spots. And so we're hoping to to get somebody interested in joining our committee. We did have a full quorum in March, but we were not able to accomplish a quorum for the meeting that we had on July eighth. So we'll be working on that, trying to make sure that that is accomplished. And then we also have some people who will be coming off the board. So we will need to recruit some people to do, to do the citizens oversight. So that's, that's my report. I have to give special kudos again, like I said, to the staff. You did a great job. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate that good news coming from the Oversight Committee. And as you mentioned, I guess there's a one member short, so I don't know what that process is, but those that are watching, I guess, can reach out. On board, you you heard the good news or there are any comments? Or we just all want to just thank Ms. Harrison for being here. And that's good news. Yes, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for your time that you volunteered to serve. It makes a big difference. I know it's a lot of responsibility. You're talking about a whole lot of money, hundreds of millions of dollars. I thank you very much. And I did want to just make the public aware that the audit you're talking about is actually online. So if they go online, S B C U S D and go to our agenda, they can click on that item and the the audit is posted out there on the website.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, for that. All right. Well, thank you. Hopefully we get you in before it's actually the official bedtime. And no, the rest of us will be going for, I don't know, the board seems like they still have energy right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next time. Okay, board, we're moving to eight point two, the Building Fund Financial and Performance Audit Reports for Fiscal Year Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Business Services.
Madam President, I'm going to ask that Janie Christakos, our Associate Superintendent, do a brief introduction of our guests this evening.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. You've met Ms. Shiloh Gerosby before and she'll be here to present. She's from Eddie Bailey and she will present the report to the board this evening.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I think Ms. Harrison did a lovely job presenting on my behalf. Maybe there's not much more to say, but I will go ahead and share my screen with you now. I do have the report in front of me. And so bear with me here. I practiced this earlier to make sure I had everything down. And hopefully, in just a moment, you will be able to see the report. Are we all set there?
Yeah, it it's tiny, but yes, I think they have, are able to pull it up as well.
I can see it.
Can you? Okay.
Great. So what you have in front of you then is the Financial and Performance Audit for your Building Fund, specific to Measures T and Measure N. And this is for June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Obviously, we are a whole year past this now, so I'm sure as you look through these financial statements, you'll recognize that as of today, they would look much differently than they did a year ago, but nonetheless, we do want to make sure that we have that opportunity to present for you the results for prior year. And obvious, our audit report always starts with our independent auditor's report. This is our opinion specific to the financial statements. And what what we're doing here is we're providing you reasonable assurance that the financial statements as presented are materially stated based on our audit. So that is, our job is to provide you with the opinion and and attest to that. And in this opinion, as we scroll, I'm going to go to page two because this is really the opinion paragraph at the top of page two is a clean opinion. It does represent that the financial statements as presented are materially stated. I'm specific to, in this case, as I mentioned previously, the Building Fund Measures T and Measure N. We are not looking at the district as a whole in this particular audit. This is a special purpose audit and that's what that paragraph right below really emphasizes. So that way, everybody understands that this is, this is just related to those specific programs. And as I mentioned, an unmodified, I didn't mention, but I will mention, the unmodified opinion is our clean opinion, the highest level of assurance we provide in an audit. The next couple pages really represent for you the financial statements themselves for two thousand nineteen. We like to break this out for you between Measures T and Measure N. And at that time, if you're looking at the total column, just on, just shy of fifty-four million is what was left in the funds in the prior year. We're probably in a much different place this year. And once we complete that audit, we'll cycle back again and talk about that piece of it. Your income and expenditures related to Measure T and N. So this really, as you can see too, when you're looking at this Measure T, we're we're winding down a million dollars in expenditures in two thousand nineteen in Measure T. Measure N is still working through projects. The majority of the work is occurring in Measure N, over seventeen million in Measure N in the prior year as well. So moving on, not a whole lot of changes in relation to these next few pages that go through our standardized footnotes and disclosures that are required to accompany our financial statements. So I won't go through those details. If you have specific questions, of course, I'm always willing to answer those for you. We do provide you with some supplementary information in this report, and this is really just to give you more information about the bonds themselves that are related to the projects that are funding Measures T and N. And the budget information is also, once again, just more supplementary information that I won't really present details on, but happy to answer any specific questions if there are any. And then the other piece that I do want to talk about is our independent auditor's reports here that we provide for you specific to our government audit standards. You are our school district. You were required to comply with those government audit standards. And this report is required for us to provide you with any, any comments, findings or issues that we come across with respect to the internal controls over the financial reporting specific to processing transactions for Measures T and N. So there's different levels of reporting findings and this report would identify if any findings existed, but we are happy to report, as Ms. Harrison had mentioned, that there were no findings. Usually this is where those findings would come out of. You would see some reference to to any findings, but this, there are none. And if, and then this, these following pages would be where we would lay out the details of those findings. And here, as you can see, there are none reported. And then we also include this schedule, which would identify any follow-up if we had any findings in the prior year. We would look at those and and then provide you the follow-up to status of prior year findings, but there weren't, there haven't been findings in the last couple of years. And then the piece that I think most people really care the most about is the Performance Audit piece. This is the piece where we really get into the ballot language and the purpose and use of the funds. And our audit in this particular report, we call it a performance audit because we are looking at performance as it pertains to complying with the ballot text and the voter-approved bond language project list. So our goal is strictly a compliance report. We call it a report on performance. This is our here, the results of which we didn't have any exceptions, so we didn't identify any projects that or expenditures that did not appear to meet the ballot language. So it's a clean report. And then just some context behind that audit. We talk a little bit about the Measures T and Measures, why we're doing the audit, our objectives, what we're actually doing in the audit under the procedures performed here, and then those conclusions that we've reached. And once again, the conclusion being that we didn't have any exceptions to compliance for for this piece of the audit. Had there been any, we would have reported them here on this schedule. And once again, we do the same thing with this report where we would follow up on any prior year comments as well with a status update and and none in the last couple of years. So I will leave it at that. That really sums up the report. I'll leave this screen share on in the event that anybody has a specific question and wants me to turn back to a page before I stop sharing.
Thank you. And I think that was, again, more good news for us tonight. I don't see any board member comments in the chat. So it looks like, let's see, they they are still with me. So it looks like everything was great and no other questions about it. And we appreciate the the good news and I guess we'll say we'll see you next time.
Thank you so much, everybody. Take care and have a great evening.
You as well. All right, board, we're moving on to eight point three, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one reopening of schools update.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, first of all, we want to say thank you very much for the direction, very clear direction that you gave us two weeks ago to open in a distance learning mode. As has been mentioned earlier, this evening, a number of other districts, a number of other large urban districts have followed suit and are deciding to remain in distance, distance learning mode for the start of their school years as well. Your your decision brought certainty to what we're going to do. As as you know, not everybody, it's not everybody's first choice. It's not our first choice. We would love to have students and teachers come back together on campus and be able to have school as we remember it from February, but our context in our community does not allow us to do that at this point. And so tonight, our objective is to thank you for that certainty. We want to provide an update, some responses to questions and requests you made. And then we really want to go deeper in relation to new legal requirements per S B ninety-eight around distance learning and how we're doing those final preparations for twenty twenty-one, which is now two weeks from Monday away. So as always, I want to thank Dr. Menares for her leadership and the team of over a hundred people that have worked with her along the way and turned the presentation over to her.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Well, thank you, Board President Rogers, Vice President Dr. Wyatt, Dr. Volkmer, Board, Cabinet, Community. Again, tonight, you're going to hear, not just for me, we are expanding this work as we need to because this is about opening up our schools. And so you'll hear from various cabinet members on the progress for the reopening of schools. We want to thank the community and our teachers for their public comments and to rest assured that we are listening to those comments that are coming in and that each and every recommendation that we bring to the board, we give a lot of thought and research behind to make sure that we're making that best, those best recommendations. And sometimes it does take a bit more time than we think it's going to. But then also that the internal decisions we're making are done with great thought and consideration for all. And as you know, board, there is constantly new information coming out from the public health, not just at the county level, but at the state and federal in terms of transmission of COVID. And so that has many implications for our work. But we are very pleased that we know how we're starting our school year, that we know we're starting it on August third. Board, before I get deep into this, we did have an update on one slide. It is the slide that's related to P P E. So if you printed out the presentation earlier, the numbers that you have on that presentation have changed. And so that will look different on this, on that slide as it comes forward. Mr. Vittier will be presenting that. So we apologize for any commotion, confusion.
Dr. Menares, I will pause you at after slide nine and see if there's any questions or input.
Perfect. Thank you, President.
Go on to two point oh. Thank you.
You're welcome. No, thank you. So let's have next slide, please. Our present, our presentation objectives. We want to update the board and the community on the number of positive COVID cases in San Bernardino County so that we're again, making decisions based off of our local context. We want to update the board on the personal protective equipments, need and procurement, where we are with that. So that's the one where you're going to see the numbers are different than what you originally received. We do want to share with the board where we are in terms of the family preferences, the questionnaire that's gone out and the the information we have to date as well as the employee preferences. And Mr. Holderson will share that information on the employee side. At the end of the presentation, we will share with you the communication plan that is rolling through our communications department and Ms. Ontavetos will will share on that and some new or I'll say enhanced communication tools that we are using to try to keep people updated. And then finally, we are going to spend a good bulk of this presentation talking about how we're improving S B C U S D Distance Learning Instructional Model using the guidance that came from Senate Bill ninety-eight on when we shared, or when I shared actually, on June thirtieth, the trailer bill that was A B seventy-seven. When it was all passed and said and done, it was transitioned into Senate Bill ninety-eight. So you'll see a lot of that crossover and it's a lot of the same language, but the Senate bill had some additional pieces to it. Next slide, please. So just to recap again of what took place on June thirtieth, it seems like it was a long time ago, but it really wasn't. The board approved the twenty twenty-one school budget without significant cuts. So thank you, board, for that. And we do thank our our governor and our legislature for not cutting too much into our school budgets, especially at this unprecedented time. The board confirmed that the staff will open schools in a distance learning model on August third due to the increased transmission rate in our boundaries of the county. So just it's it's about this, the the area that we serve in San Bernardino City Unified, that those numbers have increased compared to the county as a whole, but overall as a county, we see that our numbers continue to increase. And then finally, when it's safe, the board will consider additional options for connecting small groups of students with teachers on campus and moving forward with a blended learning instructional model. We agreed that we would be bringing information back to you, board, before we moved into any of those next phases. So in the meantime, we're focused on securing items that students will need to return to school, such as face coverings, hand sanitizer, all of that P P E. And that's why we're sharing with that with you this evening. Next slide, please. So again, board, we want to continue to bring these reopening guiding principles back to you, back to the community in this time of uncertainty and and various levels of where people feel about this pandemic and how it's impacted our lives in San Bernardino. We have these four guiding principles. First and foremost, ensure health and physical safety of students and staff. And thus, that is why you you move to open in a distance learning model because that is what we're thinking about at this very moment, health and safety. We have to be sure to adhere to federal, state and county guidance while we're working to provide high-quality learning experiences. And so Dr. Perez will share with you how we're going to, how the And so Dr. Perez will share with you how we're going to, how the distance learning for this school year will, will not be the distance learning of the spring. Spring, um, we did a, a, just a human's job of getting that off the ground in a very short amount of time. I don't know if that was the right, um, phrase that I used, but I think we all understand it was quite the lift. Um, and now we can take that, that, those learnings from our distance learning, the first go out and improve upon them. And so you'll hear from Dr. Perez, what Ed Services is doing and how we're going to work with our teachers to provide that. And then finally, we have to be sure we're providing safe and accessible working conditions. Um, and in the public comments, we hear a lot of that, right? Our teachers still want to make sure that we're keeping that in mind. And so to reassure everybody that that is part of our reopening guiding principles. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Dr. Menares, and good evening, board. Uh, this slide was updated while you were in closed session this evening, so it reflects the most current numbers that we have. Um, as you can see, we're still seeing an increase in COVID positive cases throughout the county. And now we're also seeing a shortage of test kits. As you know, Governor Newsom placed additional restrictions on our county this week and closing additional public locations. Within the city of San Bernardino, we continue to have the highest number of positive cases in the county, and we're showing over 3,200 today. As you may recall, when we initially thought we may return in a blended model in August, we brought back nearly 400 essential maintenance and operations employees and school custodians from the Safe Rate Home order. As you've traveled around the district, I'm sure you can see the amazing progress made in completing the outstanding projects and keeping our campuses clean. We believe it's prudent and appropriate as we are seeing the current spike in cases and in following the priority of health and safety first to scale back operations again. Next slide, please. Board, thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief update on our PPE. I want to first thank a few members of our incident management team logistics section. They're responsible for finding all the stuff. Uh, Maria Espinoza, Dr. Marcus Funches, Debbie Love and Laura Cardenas for the constant work on acquiring this very hard-to-find PPE. This current chart in the first column identifies our first three-month supply of identified PPE needs to support on-campus education once we return. This also shows our one-time purchases, such as our new cleaning sprayers and hand washing stations. Board, our team is anticipating the ongoing PPE replenishment needs, so we can stay ahead and will again be placing orders in early fall and continuously to stay ahead throughout the year. We have finally begun to receive supplies from the state, which you'll see in the second column. Yesterday, five of the 19 state pallets arrived in district. These pallets included a partial inventory of the 126,000 disposable masks, which will be used for by visitors or students who may have forgotten their permanent face covering. We also received 9,500 facials, primarily for use by teachers, special ed students, or others with medical accommodations, which may prevent them from wearing a mask. The district is also taking receipt of all items to support our district-approved charter schools. As we know, some of them are choosing to reopen physically. We are making it a priority to get them their allocation as we receive it. In the third column, you'll see items the district is purchasing, which we anticipate arriving in September or early October. These items include a total of 1.2 million cloth face coverings. This will be enough for each student and staff member to receive 10 each. 3 million disposable face coverings, additional N95 masks, gloves, hand sanitizer and face shields. Due to the quantity of needs, bids are required and we will seek board approval on August 18th. We will also keep the board updated as items arrive, or if we have any unforeseen delays. The fourth column shows what is currently in district. We also continue to receive donations of PPE from local partners and nonprofits. It should be noted that all of our employees who have continued working since our March 13th closure have also continued to receive PPE as needed. We have not run out at any point thus far. The last row on the bottom shows Plexiglas dividers. This is a reminder, board, that the school's PDS team led by Dr. Menares just finished evaluating the needs on each campus and in each of our classrooms last week. They have begun submitting their plans back to us for district review. We anticipate having a better scope of material and labor within the next two weeks, at which time we can begin additional purchases. We are also meeting with the governor's office of emergency services on Thursday to begin applying for reimbursement through FEMA for many of these items. Next slide, please. Board, another one of, uh, your incident management team's priorities these past couple of weeks has been supporting the enrollment for new students and reregistration for existing students. To minimize the risk of COVID for our families and employees, this process has moved 100% online this year through ARES. Many of our families and schools have used this online process previously, in particular, our district, middle and high schools. Our communications department, enrollment and placement departments, as well as the parent engagement office, began engaging families weeks ago to ensure that they all have the training and supports they need. This has included online training for parents and staff in the use of ARES. We want to remind the board and our families that cyber tech continues to be the troubleshooting and support for existing devices and hotspots, and they can be reached at 866-223-8685.
What are the hours?
Uh, they are Monday through Friday, and I'll, I'll get the exact hours and announce that here shortly. Uh, this week, we're finalizing the training of 20 employees. Uh, this is going to be in our student services to staff a live hotline by which families can receive live support when they call. This hotline will be up and running this coming Monday during normal business hours. And that number is 909-891-1010. This information will all continue to be pushed out to our families heavily through the various communication methods you will hear about later in tonight's presentation. Our schools are also staffed, although remotely, and are returning calls and providing support for their families. For the families who may need more one-on-one in-person support, and once all remote support options have been exhausted, we are able to make appointments for families to come to their child's school and complete on a computer with live in-person support. Thank you, board.
Next slide.
I, I do have a comment for Doc, uh, for Eric Vatier. I had added it to the comment box.
Yes, we're gonna stop, Ms. Rosas Medina, they're gonna stop at nine and then we'll take.
Okay, okay, I'll do, I'll wait for them.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So board, you had asked us to, um, survey our families. And so we sent out a questionnaire asking their interest in, um, what they would like for each one of their children for the incoming school year. So I want to clarify, because now that the board has taken action and we are opening a distance learning, this is to find out, this information will help guide us for when we are ready to move into the blended model. And so that we can actually offer blended instruction, because it's been deemed safe and the board takes action on that. How many of those families still want to stay in distance learning? And so we're referring to distinguish that, we're referring to it as extended distance learning. So as of now, everyone will be in distance learning. But when it is deemed safe to do so, we need to be ready to be able to, um, offer extended distance learning for those families who still don't feel comfortable sending their children in. So that's what this information is providing for us. Now, notice that we, um, pulled this information today. This, these are the families that as of nine o'clock this morning, logged into our website on, on the enrollment and placement services and completed the survey digitally. We have, um, over five bins of questionnaires that have come in in a paper format, um, that the enrollment and, um, placement service team is starting to go through. They will take that information also updated into our student information set, um, our student information, um, system, so that we have a better picture. But as of now, you can see that, um, half of our community, uh, that we have received the digital responses from, um, 14,285 so far, um, are, are willing to and ready to start their children in a blended instruction. Um, 43.4% said they wanted distance learning, and then the 6.7 are the other. And so other, um, we had a qualifier on the survey that said at this time, due to the number, the amount of, um, transmission in the community, we could not offer in-person instruction five days a week. But we wanted to get a sense of, um, what parents would want other than distance learning or blended. So some said that they would want, um, you know, five days a week. Some said that they would want packets. There's just different, um, pieces of information there. And so we've gathered all of that. And what we're going to be able to do, once we get the paper questionnaires put into ARES, and so we'll have a, a much better picture of what, um, our community wants for each child in their home by school and grade level. Then we're, we've already told our principals today, um, that we will let them know when they can pull that report for their school. We'll show them exactly how to do that by school, to then see which of any of their families, they still don't have information for. And then we're going to ask, we're asking the schools then to reach out to those, those families. So we wanted to get as many as possible at the beginning and then let the schools finish out. We know that typically, parents are very responsive to their principals. They have a different relationship than from a district level, but we also know these are unprecedented times. And so, um, given that we already have so many families that have responded digitally, um, and many that have submitted the questionnaire, we feel very good that we will have a very nice picture of what this looks like. And when it is safe and ready to do, but, and you have taken action to move into a blended model, we'll be able to, um, provide for our families what they need. Now, before I move the slide to the next one, I do want to share, because this came up at the, um, community meeting on July 9th. Some parents said that when they completed this questionnaire, they did not realize that, um, the distance learning meant distance learning even for the whole year or even for a semester. And so what the question was, um, a couple of times, more than once for sure, was if I signed up for distance learning on that questionnaire, can I change my mind? And the answer was yes, of course. And we said that they would change, they would just let their principal know that they want to change their mind. And, and we want to be able to do that. We don't want families jumping back and forth between blended and distance learning. That will be difficult for the child. Um, but we also want, um, we want to give, um, choice to our, our parents. And so some parents may want to start in extended distance learning once we go into blended. And then they might hear from their, their neighbors that it's going very well. And then they would feel very comfortable having their child do that. So we are going to allow for that as well. Again, this data is not complete. We have quite a few, um, in paper form that the team will be inputting into our system. And so when we are ready for the blended model, um, we will have all of that data in one place, and that will be in our ARES system. Next slide.
Yes, um, good evening, board. This is Tom Halderson. Um, so our department sent out a, uh, questionnaire to all of our employees, all the employee groups that are listed there, certificated, certificated substitutes, classified, classified substitutes, management, and, and then a total there. So the survey went out on June the 30th, um, for 10 days. Like I mentioned earlier, all employees were surveyed. And the question, um, that was asked, the, uh, really the only question was when my site or department reopens, I am able to report physically. Now, um, that, the reason that question was asked, um, was, as, um, Dr. Menares mentioned, we're preparing for what the parents want, but we're also have to prepare for what our teachers and other employees can do. So the information really from this survey is for our principals to use. For example, with teachers, to figure out what teachers will have to be in a distance learning mode and what teachers, once we do return, could do the blended program. So we used, um, the categories. If, if someone reported yes, then of course, that was pretty mu, that was the end of the survey. If they reported no, then we use the criteria in the federal law, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, as to give us a reason why they could not report physically. For example, childcare issues, that's in the federal law, that was in the questionnaire. Um, pending results of a COVID test, experience, experiencing COVID symptoms, quarantining or isolation order, caring for an individual in the employee's home who's subject to a quarantine or isolation order or symptoms. So, um, the main reason here is to figure out, especially at our sites and departments, who can come in, who feels comfortable coming in and who does not. So we can tailor, especially the teachers, into that distance learning, um, mode for however long we have to do that. So let me just start with a certificated. We have over 2,000 responses. There's around 2,800 certificated employees. So 85% of them said, yes, they could report. Um, our substitutes, we didn't get a, a very good response there. We have about 750 certificated substitutes, um, but you see the numbers there. Our classified employees, um, we have around 2,400 classified employees, so less than half did respond, um, and 89% said they could come, uh, back physically. Our classified substitutes, we have about 250, and so obviously the numbers there are very low. Um, management, about 275 managers and 129 of them responded, which is less than half. Um, but 93% of them said they could return. So, um, those are the results of the survey. Now, the question may come up, we have a lot of people that didn't respond. What are we going to do? So I'll be working with our union, um, leaders, and we will be sending out, uh, a joint memo um, to the employees, uh, to retake that survey or to take that survey. Um, not again, but those people that have not taken it with, with a, um, strong message of the purpose of that survey. So that employees, we don't want employees to feel like they can't take the survey because they're afraid of something. So we'll work, I'll work with our union leaders, we'll get that out and we'll have updated information um, at our next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right. Our first question is, um, Ms. Rosas Medina?
Um, yes, thank you for that. But I, I want to go, I have, I have questions for him as well, but I want to go back to Eric Vatier and his slide. Um, just, just noting that San Bernardino County has, uh, has been on Governor Newsom's watch list due to the increase of positive test, um, COVID tests, um, cases. And along with other counties, um, at, where, uh, recently added additional restrictions. And, and I did see Dr. Volkmer's, um, daily report and, and, uh, asked Karen, uh, Ms. Cunningham to try to get me the link directly. And it was noted that the Department of Public Health is now providing the number of COVID-19 cases by school district. And San Bernardino City by school district has the highest rate per 100,000 population of all school districts in San Bernardino County. And I also wanted to note that as well, um, how, why this is so important that we take this serious and, and I'm glad that we're moving in that direction to do so. So then now going back to with regards to the, um, the other slides, um, the NP, uh, let me see, which, page nine? And page nine. And on the top, it says, this is for the, the educator one. This is page seven.
Nine, it's, yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
How it says right down the top, questionnaire workforce, workforce preferences. It is a tagmas leading, because in reality, it's not their preferences. It's just asking them if they're able to go. It's like, it's like as if, uh, they were to ask as board members, um, if we would like to, are we able to go to a board meeting at the BOB? And we say, yes, we can go, but the reality is, you know, under the current circumstances, is it, um, is it something that we should? And I think this is what goes back, this is a good question to find out if they can go. But it's not asking what their personal preferences is, especially when you melt the word preferences on top. I would like for you to ask the additional question in asking them what their preferences are similar to the parents'. And that way, we're able to see a bigger picture, a better picture on, on the realities of how teachers are feeling in this situation. And I think, I don't think that we did that the correct way. I think it's, was a little bit misleading compared to when you look at the parent survey.
Thank you. Medina.
Are we planning to, when we do the question, when we do the next, when we send out the survey to the following educators that did not fill out the first time, can we add that second question?
Yes, we can add that in to that survey.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, thank you. And along the same lines as the question Abigail had. I looked at this family preferences thing, and I asked last time that basically, there'd be three choices on this chart. And it was, you know, do you want distance learning, blended model, or an onsite? And, you know, by, it sounds like the way we did the survey, you just left it under other. And usually, you know, in survey results, nobody usually fills out that part, or they ignore that part. I don't know why we wouldn't just give them the multiple choice, have them pick which one that they want to do with no qualifiers and things like that. You're just distorting the data. And I don't think you got a true representation of what people either want, families want or not. And then we should have given exactly the same survey to the staff. Then you'd have some comparable results. I don't even know what you do with this data.
Okay, Dr. Flores?
Thank you, Madam President. Since we're on this slide, I agree with Mike. It's not comparable data. And also, it's only 14,285 responses, and we have 50,000 families, 50,000 kids. So I mean, you know, sample wise, okay, but I, I don't think that it is comparable to asking teachers. But I want to go back to also slide seven where Eric, I think it's slide seven, no, slide six. Go to slide, yeah, there we go. So this deals with our PPE, right? And thank God that we are going online, because, you know, the, the bid dates are when we start school and, and so forth, most of them. And, and then I want to read something from the nurses, the nurses' union. And they are very worried, and they just came out today. Nurses call for postponing in-person learning citing record infections. And this is the National Nurses United. I'm only going to read a couple of paragraphs. With coronavirus cases establishing record infections and hospitalization cases and deaths exploding across the US, National Nurses United today urged all school districts and policymakers in states where the pandemic, pandemic shows signs, no signs of slowing, to postpone returning to an in-person learning model. Today, Abigail, I did get the, the stats. San Bernardino City to date has 311 deaths of children between ages five and 19. Rialto has 103. Ontario has 144. Fontana has 219. Victorville has 87. And it's all, this is in all the cities. This is just, you know, the top, the top ones.
That can't be, that can't be deaths, Dr. Flores.
Yes, it is.
The total number is 311.
Yeah, no, no. I have it. I have it.
The total, the total deaths for the whole county is 309.
They're confirmed cases, not deaths.
Oh, these are confirmed cases?
Yeah. That category, yeah, that, that isn't even nationwide.
Okay.
That's still a lot of confirmed cases.
Confirmed, right. Confirmed cases, thank you.
Kids are being infected, all right, and, and so forth.
We have the most.
Nurses are also worried that we will be competing with them for the PPEs, and they will not have enough of protection for them to be in hospitals, because everybody is competing in having, you know, for, for the protective equipment. And so that's a concern that I think we haven't really considered. So anyway, I'm just raising it as a concern. Let's go now to the slide, the ninth slide. And that's my last question or last comment. Okay, so what if we would have asked, instead of saying, I am able to report to work physically, what if we would have asked, do I feel safe in reporting physically? I wonder what we would have got from our employees, all of our employees. Do I feel safe, you know, in reporting? That's a very different question, because yes, you can report physically. But what if we were to say, do I feel comfortable, or not comfortable, do I feel safe returning to work physically? I would want to ask that question of our employees. And I don't know if you've all seen this, but three teachers in Arizona, you know, worked in summer school, and they all got coronavirus. They wore masks. They wore all their protective gear. And one of them passed away. One of them died. And, I mean, those scenarios are real. And so, and we know that coronavirus is, you know, airborne. And it can spread through the air conditioning system, through the air. I mean, I, we just have to be very mindful of all of this. So, but thank you for all of this. I, I don't know. Let me look at that other data. I thought it said, I thought it said that it was, let me see, sorry, I can't find it. I was just writing down the data. But anyway, I think that, let me see what it is. Oh, yeah, confirmed cases. You're right. I read, I thought it was deaths. It's confirmed cases. But still, that's a lot, guys. That's a lot of kids. So okey doke. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, and Dr. Flores is actually my department that maintains the county's website. So I look at it every day, the one for the SB COVID.
I miscued.
It is a big difference between cases and deaths, because I mean, it's bad, but they have, I mean, the total county is 309. In the city of San Bernardino, the number of deaths right now is at 28 for the, all, all the city. But as someone stated earlier, the rate of
What about the county?
What, oh, the entire cases for the county?
Yeah.
Is up to
Is it up to 600 and something?
It's 20,000 confirmed cases.
But deaths, deaths.
No, deaths, 306 for the entire county. 309 as of tonight. But I, I want to say that, I want to thank the staff for doing a great job. And I think we're doing everything right. I mean, you know, the, the emotion I'm most proud of is after Tim Prince got up and said, we shouldn't shut down. Then before he could even sit down, I made the motion to shut down, just in, to, to make sure we were as cautious as possible. And I think it's been proven, we made the right decision. And now we're taking our time to allow us getting the supplies in whenever they happen to come in, because that's a moving target also. We're going to wait till we get the supplies in before we even have the discussion about how we're going to come back and who's going to come back. So we have plenty of time now, because we haven't created an artificial deadline, we have plenty of time now to do it right. And the good thing about the information from the staff, you asked the right question, because there are laws that dictate who can get paid for not coming back, right? So the, the district put those variables out there and allowed the staff to respond. The numbers that we got, I think, are great. One thing that is going to limit the number of staff that come back are going to be when the district, I think, is going to become flexible, as we've done in the county. When we say, if you're high risk, being over 65, then we're going to prioritize trying to find a way to allow those employees to work remotely. And, or high risk. If you're diabetes, asthma, there's a whole list on the CDC site that, that deems somebody being high risk. Those employees, we're going to be extra careful about making sure that we find a way to accommodate them in, in any way possible. I think we all agree on that. The, the good thing is, we have the time to do it now. So I just want to commend the, 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 the staff for doing the job they've done. And I do agree that we want to be, I think we see more clear and have three options on the, the parents on what they wanted. And I thought, I was going to say, I want to do distance learning only. I want to do, I want to have my child go to school full time as full, as soon as possible. Or I want my kid to do, well, and actually, if you ask those two, then you know whoever's left is going to do a hybrid. And, but I, I, the good thing is, when you look at the number of students, parents who want the kids to come back, you definitely have enough teachers and classified employees that are willing to come back, that will allow us to operate our sites once it becomes safe. And once we get the PPEs in, that will allow us to do that. So I, I think what we should do, the next step is, is to take our time. Mr. Vatier, I'm sure you'll be able to advise us on when even numbers will be coming clear in terms of when you're going to get the supplies in, right? Because I, I, I really do, my, one of my biggest concerns is, you know, well, having it, right now, a lot of the supplies, we don't, we don't have at all, right? And then once they get there, in terms of the masks and that type of thing. One good thing I'm hearing is, you know, some of the studies are saying that a lot of the younger kids maybe don't contract the virus as much. That's still open for discussion. The, the other good thing about waiting, there are going to be some districts that start going back to school, and we're going to learn a whole lot from that. So by the time we do open up, we won't be guessing. There'll be other sites in the United States of America where the students have gone back onsite, and we'll know what the concerns and the issues are, and we'll learn from them how to do hours out even better when we do open up again. And then, of course, there was good news about a vaccine. So I think everything is looking up in a bad situation. The one thing I still say that is out there, and no one's really thinking about it and talking about it, and that's the issue of how folks are going to go back to school if, if we're distance learning, then who's going to watch the kids if people are at work? That's not only our problem. That's a problem in our entire society. But thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. And, and Dr. Hill, right before you start, Eric, can you go ahead and answer that question that came up?
Yes, Madam President. For Mr. Tillman, the hours and for our families, the hours for cyber tech for the support is daily, so seven days a week from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And cyber tech are people who help their families. Once we get them a Chromebook, they can call that number. I just want to be clear. So they know what we're talking about.
Exactly.
Yeah, any devices, any hotspots, if they have one that needs to be swapped out, they'll, they'll make an appointment for them to come in and do that. So.
No, they don't, they don't support employees, do they?
No, we have our IT department is handling our employees, and cyber tech is handling students and families.
Thank you.
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. I have one question right now. That's a questionnaire for the family preferences. You don't have to go back to the slide.
Did you mute?
We lost Dr. Hill.
Dr. Hill? Did you get, no, she's not muted. Okay, we'll have to get her back on. Okay, and till I get her back on, we can go ahead and continue on?
Dr. Hill needs to upgrade her Wi-Fi at home.
You may be right. I'm going to, I'm going to close down and come back in after I get clarification on the question. The question is on the family preference. Is it possible for us to know of the parents who responded, how many have elementary, elementary only, I should say, and how many have secondary only? I don't know if that would.
Yes, Dr. Hill, we asked them. Yeah, I apologize. Yes, we asked them for grade level, because we actually wanted the data for each one of their children so we could put it into our system, so we can plan that way. So at the next boarding, board meeting, I'll bring a B C that will have all of that, and it'll have more family data in there, because what I showed the board right now is what we have in our system, because those are the families that did it digitally. As I shared, we have quite a bit that submitted the questionnaires in paper that hasn't put in, been put into the system. So yes, we can bring that information back to you. And I, I believe, I, as soon, we will bring it back, and the, the data may not be 100% complete, but we'll bring back what we have by grade level.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'm going to log out and log back in. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we can, those are all the questions.
Can I ask a question, one more question?
Yes, Mr. Tillman?
Are, are we doing modeling for transportation? And so we know in advance what our limitations are going to be in terms of the busing? Because I know if we decided to bring back a large number of students, the buses that we have wouldn't be able to do it on a regular schedule, right?
Correct. So, Mr. Tillman, on the Transportation Department, we had a work group that was, is prepared. Not, we don't have the routing done yet, but we have where we know that if we're bringing half of our students in for the blended model, that they can meet that need with our existing work through Durham. So, and, and following the social distancing. So now it's just a matter of routing.
And was there any discussion, discussion about, with the parents, about the proposal of where we had like half days and two hours in the morning, and two hours in the afternoon? Or two days on and two days off? Or did we consider doing year round? Was any of that discussion brought up?
During our, during our community meeting with the family that week. So the way, you know, so it was live streamed, so we didn't, like what we do right now for the board meeting, so that we did not limit the number of families that can join. And so then therefore, we had to, they had, they submitted questions. And not that question, what the, the questions were around was scheduling of the distance learning and knowing when that is. And so Dr. Perez shared with the families that that would be by site, and that they would be getting that information from them. I don't recall, and the team, if you can help me, I don't recall questions, not a substantial number of questions around blended and like the days and all of that, partly because we shared with them that we're still working on that, and we would work on that with our teacher union.
And that's a discussion we should, we should continue. And, and one other clue I want to give you, and it kind of addresses with Dr. Flores brought up, and I don't mean to minimize higher participation in surveys, but our job is to make sure that we contact the households. We offer them, offer them to do the survey for us. But if, if, if a parent in a household chooses not to do the survey, we cannot make them do the survey. And I know for a fact that I have parents tell me, I, I got the mailed one, I got the one on the internet. Do I do both? Are they both the same? So I want to tell you, I heard from a lot of parents that we contacted them so much, they got confused. So that was a good thing. So it, it, I know for a fact that if parents didn't respond to the survey, it wasn't because we didn't contact them and ask them to respond. It's because a lot of them chose, for whatever reason, not to respond. And that's what our job is, to get as many people to respond as possible. But I do know because of statistics, with the numbers that we have, they are a good representation. But I do know because statistics with the numbers that we have, they are a good representation. They are the, our parents, they may not be as random as we wanted to, but they do serve to some extent, just by the happenstance, that it is, I think, a, a uh, a good measurement of what all the parents want to do. So I, I want to commend you on the work we've done in terms of contacting the parents to get their feedback in terms of what they want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Okay.
Thank you, President Rogers. Good evening, Board. Um, thank you for the opportunity to share information related to distance learning two point O. So we recognize and applaud our district and school site teams for building out and implementing a completely different learning platform in the spring when we were at a moment's notice required to physically close our schools. We also, excuse me, acknowledge where there were clear areas for improvement. And anticipating that distance learning would be part of our teaching and learning experience this fall, our teams worked to address supports that would be needed for our leaders, for our teachers, for our parents, and for our staff in general. So in short, the distance learning that students and parents will return to in the fall will not be the distance learning that we all experience in the spring. First and foremost, SB ninety-eight has laid out very clear expectations and parameters for attendance for what distance learning will look like and for what parent and family supports will look like. So you'll hear me reference uh the direct implications and requirements of SB ninety-eight throughout the next couple of slides. You can go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. So as recently mentioned, SB ninety-eight requires the following. It requires that our students and teachers have daily live interaction. So each and every day, every scholar will have interaction with their, with um their teacher. We will also be required to document daily attendance, including monitoring weekly the synchronous versus asynchronous instruction. So I want to describe for you all um and, and for our community what that means. So um we have synchronous learning, which is the, the type of learning that would take place kind of in the setting that we're in now, where um we're able to interact, or the cabinet team and the board are able to interact. Um, that is that live synchronous learning and instruction. The asynchronous could include a variety of things where teachers may post information on a platform with a video for them to watch and the teacher's not physically with them live. So we have to actually monitor and account for that breakdown um and what that looks like because the intent of SB ninety-eight is really for students to um not only engage in, in the instruction, but also for that social emotional aspect of connecting with the adults who are very important in, in, you know, in their lives, in their teachers, in their, the counselors, in, you know, the aide, I heard us, you know, mentioning that earlier, the aides that were, have worked with them um, you know, over the years. All of that personal interaction is extremely important and the intent of SB ninety-eight. Um, the last requirement is related to daily parent and guardian notification of absences. So similar to what we had used in the past with our ARI system, the daily attendance will be taken by the teacher. And when a student is not present, that notification will go out um, you know, that day informing a parent uh that their child was not part of the learning that day. But it doesn't stop there. So there are um measures that will be taken by our site-based attendance teams. And this is also part of the bill, but it's left up to the district as to how we implement. So there will be a tiered approach for students who are um absent, missing three or more school days or sixty percent of their, of their school week. And so we have um an approach in place where teachers will take that attendance, but there will be another trigger, uh, you know, a secondary trigger in place for alerting um the teacher and, you know, the school staff that a student has gone three or more days um without having contact. And so at that point, we have measures in place where school site teams will then deploy and make contact with the families, really with the intent of identifying where is the breakdown? What is the need that the student and family may have? Um, and connecting them with the appropriate resources, whether it's an academic need. Um, it's whether it's at access to technology, um, you know, any of those factors as well as the health um and mental health aspects. So those are the things that we will be looking for. And again, a, a student attending school is not just for the academic piece. We, we recognize that and um have taken measures in, in our um conversations with the union and negotiations around having these pieces um be enacted and, and be you know, part of our DNA and how we operate as we're in the uh distance learning environment. We could advance to the next slide, please.
Can, can I ask a question?
Stopper, okay, but go ahead, Mr. Tillman, and I, there's a certain pause in there so that they get all of it out, just in case, but go ahead.
Okay, on this slide, the, the part, this is the part that I'm confused about.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I have a parent who is working. And they got grandma baby sitting. And they got a first grader. Is the grandma supposed to log the first grader on? Or if the, if the, if the parent is at work and the kid is in childcare? Is the childcare supposed to log the kid on and make sure they're in attendance? Or if even our own teachers, if our teachers are teaching during the day, but they have a kid in our district? How are they supposed to do both at the same time? And, and, and the, the concern I've heard from parents is if, if, if my child is dropped off with grandma and grandpa, I'm just lucky to have a babysitter. But am I supposed to now tell grandma and grandpa that you have to log my child in? Uh, or will they be able to come home at night and go to the lessons? I think that's what this is missing. This is assuming that everybody has some way of being there with their child to log them on and get them going and make sure they're there to interact with the teacher during the day. And, and it makes no sense really because uh just like we're saying, employees have to go back to work, there, there's, there's jobs at, at the county. We're saying employees have to come back to work and there's absolutely no provision for childcare. So I, I'm confused how it's going to work when uh if, if you're saying, I think the part we're missing is a person used to go to work and they was sending their kid to school. So there was no concern about childcare or making sure they can log on because they were at school. So that, that point hasn't been figured out yet. And I don't know how you can mandate that you have to have daily live interaction and it's going to be synchronous versus asynchronous. Because if a parent only can give you asynchronous, then I, I, I don't know how you demand anything else.
And so, Mr. Tillman, will you, will you be addressing that? Or do you have more information on the time, times that they will be able to go on? And, you know, is it later versus earlier? Is it a video versus, you know?
I'll address, I'll address that here. Uh, and that is the reason for synchronous and asynchronous, um, Mr. Tillman. And so when, if a student happens to be absent for that exact reason that you just described, they're getting dropped off at, you know, grandparents' house and they aren't able to help them, we will, we will know that because we will be reaching out. And I'm not saying that we would have a fix for that, but we would have then that information and be able to account for it and say, okay, this particular student, while we are having synchronous learning, may only be able to participate in the asynchronous due to those factors that you just laid out. But that, those are things that we're going to have to um come to at, on a case by case. And that's why that partnership between and contact from the school to the family becomes super critical. We, we won't.
Is it, is a student going to be counted as absent or present?
So the absence and presence is a combination of the synchronous and asynchronous. It's not one or the other.
At night and be deemed as being present?
Correct.
We have a way monitoring that they participated at night?
Well, they will have a, you know, assignments or, or whether it be like a video. And then they're um asked to go to a platform that is an online platform where they're completing things with, and you're right, it's completely complex. It's not an easy um one-size-fits-all kind of answer. But we are pleased that SB ninety-eight is calling for live interaction, you know, and to the most extent possible. Obviously, for certain folks in their circumstances, we are going to have to be flexible and work with families. Um, because our intent is that students have access. And if their access looks a little different from another student's, we need to accommodate for that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I see another comment. So if it's on this and then we're going to kind of go through so we can keep them in the same kind of platform. Dr. Flores?
Yes, just following up on what Mr. Tillman said. Um, I've experienced that where I couldn't get on with my granddaughter because I had technical difficulties. And uh, and so um it was, even though I'm savvy, I, I had connectivity uh issues. So, you know, we weren't able to get on. And so perhaps just a recommendation, Dr. Pettis, what if you were to put weekly synchronous and/or, you know, slash and/or asynchronous instruction?
So this language does come directly from SB ninety-eight.
Right.
And all that we're saying is that um we will track that. So I'm going to give the example of um, you know, what the scenario that Mr. Tillman was running. We would then say that student participated asynchronously for the whole week. So they would not have, you know, we're not going to indicate that they participated synchronously, but the bill states that we will monitor synchronous and asynchronous. And this is really to account for um some of the concerns that we were hearing parents voice and even up to last Thursday's meeting about um not having contact with the teacher or somebody from the school. And, and again, the, the intent of the bill really is to um, to the best extent possible, really rebuild those um interactions and relationships between the teacher and their student.
Just to clarify then, if this student could only come on asynchronous, he would not be marked absent?
No, they would not be marked absent.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Flores, continue on.
So the next two slides um are really addressing the learning improvements. And again, wanting to start with what SB ninety-eight requires so that way our community is aware and that everybody has the same information. So um this really is where it was called out. Instruction that is substantially equi, equivalent to in-person instruction. That is what we're striving for. Um, and that is what is in the forefront of our, our team's minds as they have made made improvements to the distance learning, um, the distance learning two point O. So um also academic supports to address the needs of pupils not performing at grade level. We've heard a lot about learning loss and, you know, what are we going to do about students' learning loss? And how do we um kind of counter that with instructional practices and approaches as we come back in the, you know, in the fall? Um, so first and foremost, uh, and, and a couple, I think I heard a couple of uh public comments from our teachers related to this exactly. So I'm excited to share a lot of this information. So um our teams have, have uh really gotten down to business and created curriculum guides that um are aligned to online learning platform. So we know that you can't teach um the same amount of standards or depth in an online learning, learning platform as you could personally. So we had to adjust things to ensure that we're getting to those standards and we're getting to the intent and the rigor of the standard. Um, so some things had to be kind of slowed down and scaffolded differently to ensure that um, you know, teachers are able to cover more, some concepts more in depth and with, like I said, more scaffolds. So building to the learning that's expected. So all of our curriculum guides, um TK through twelve have been adjusted to reflect that. Um, we also have our digital textbook access district-wide, so TK twelve. All of our textbooks um and supplemental materials are available um online. And I do want to mention for our families that um if this is not something that works for you as a family, we do have a waiver and an opportunity for families to opt out of that for whatever reason that, uh, you know, they find the circumstances that they have in their home. Um, and, and it's a matter, we will get them the materials that they need. But um we are offering the digital textbook district-wide. And that will be our primary mode of providing um instruction. Uh, also, uh different and various supports and intervention structures. Um, you know, I hear a lot of people, you know, and I'm not saying that it's going to be all easy and all good. Um, but I hear a lot of people concerned about, you know, how am I going to teach in this way? And how are my students going to learn in this way? And I want to invite us to think about some opportunities that this actually presents for us. I, I remember being in the classroom and I know many teachers can attest to this. We were struggling with, okay, I'm teaching my, my main lesson to all of the students together. But then I have some students over here who are um not getting the concept on the first time. I need to adjust my approach. I really see this um as a way to provide this small group instruction that is more tailored to students' needs. So we talked about synchronous and asynchronous. I, I, I'll run a scenario. I could imagine teaching a lesson whole group. Typically, that's how we start as, you know, in the classroom. And I would be identifying by checking for understanding. I would be identifying, okay, there's a few kids over here, over here who need additional help. When I release the rest of my students to either work in groups together virtually or they're going to their independent practice, this is a perfect opportunity for me as the teacher to say, okay, I need this group of students over here. I'm going to change up my, my means of um sharing the information with them. Maybe they're more visual, I'm going to do something different. This allows for that, this, you know, the, the distance learning and the circumstances that we're in um will allow for that. And so, yes, I am trying to see the benefits and, and kind of find some sunshine in this. Um, and for me, that's one area that I think could be a positive for our student. And so our teams have also been really um, you know, just addressing the grading practices to focus on, on student learning. Uh, that reflects, sorry, the focus on student learning. So um students will have grades. They will be, you know, accountable for their learning as well as teachers will be accountable because there is a folks who have to, you know, check for understanding, grade, you know, grade the assignment. The accountability piece, what, you know, we admit was lacking um in the spring. And so I want everybody to be aware, again, I, I shared that I would be talking to our community a lot through this presentation. Um, grades, our, grades are in effect. Students will be earning grades, you will be getting progress, you know, on students. Um, more so in this um arena. Uh, we have to keep in close contact with families to just ensure, and that's required of SB ninety-eight as well. So um the two final pieces are some res, are some resources for um our educators and our leaders that our team has built out and we're super proud of the educator digital library. There are tons of resources um and examples on there. Um, and all of our educators will have access to that digital library. And so they'll get to, you know, um, you know, pull from there and try some things in their, in their digital classroom and see how they work and what works for them. And then lastly, we have the Myon Digital Library, which allows access to our students, you know, their families as well as our educators around um supplemental reading supports. This actually has seen a lot of um action, I'll say, there's been a lot of people on there. Um, since we rolled it out, I want to say uh it was probably about spring of, of uh last year when it really started taking shape. So um that also is a, a instructional resource that we have for our um leaders and educators. So we'll move to the next slide, please. So finally, with the learning improvements, we'll land with our learning supports. And these are all of the efforts, I shouldn't say all, these are some of the efforts that um we have around helping our educators. And, and again, I want to acknowledge, we're on a continuum, all of us. And I think about our teachers in the classroom, some teachers are far and on, on the far end of the spectrum where they were like, oh, my gosh, this is the best thing that ever happened. I can, you know, kind of explore my creativity with providing lessons. And some, you know, are not. And we're like, oh, my gosh, I was super glad on the last day of school because I don't have to do this anymore. We know we have that continuum. And so our efforts are to um meet everybody where they are and help them get better. It's not a reflection of their ability to teach, it's a reflection of, you know, just kind of a unfamiliar platform. And so um our Teacher Professional Learning Conference that will happen on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth is specifically geared towards this. So we have um trainings and workshops for every content area, all of, you know, science, social studies, math, reading, PE, VAPA. Everybody will receive something in their content area with a focus on how do I deliver this in a digital world? So we've, um, part- So we've partnered with some, uh, external experts who have been doing this for a while to help build up the skills of our teachers. Um, and then we have the ongoing professional learning focused on distance learning strategies that is happening in-house. Some of those things are happening through, um, what is a really nice partnership with, uh, teacher-to-teacher learning. So some of our Common Core demonstration teachers who are really, um, just phenomenal at teaching in that, um, distance learning platform are then partnering with, with other teachers. And so this is actually a really nice way for, um, to grow the, the skill and knowledge of our, of all of our teachers. And then, uh, the grade level collaboration, this is, um, a format that we've always had, but I think it's taking on, um, a much more critical role because many of us are out, you know, of our, of our element and can lean on a, a partner and a colleague to say, okay, what's working for you in your classroom? Um, you know, plan lessons together, figure out, you know, that worked, this didn't work. Um, so the grade level collaboration and planning time will really have a focus on what are the best practices and strategies. And then finally, um, other professional learning supports are how do I assess students in this environment? What does my grading look like? Um, how am I providing feedback for my scholars? Um, we're used to being able to, you know, walk around students' desks and say, oh, you know, think about this, this way or look at it that way. And we know we can't do that right now. So how do we, um, provide that feedback? So, you know, those ongoing supports, um, will be in place for our teachers. So with that, um, we'll move to the last and final piece, which is-
And we'll stop you right there.
Okay.
Gonna switch over to, uh, family supports, parents and family. I see that Mr. Tillman has a question.
If you went to the end.
Okay, so you wanna go ahead and pass this? Okay.
Yeah.
There are no questions. Go ahead and move forward with the parent and family supports.
Okay, so the last and final piece again is related to our supports for families. Um, and, and I really have been hearing this, um, from multiple, you know, parents and parent groups. Um, but we, and we, we met with our, uh, D-triple-A-C leadership not that long ago, um, and they shared that this evening when they provided their update. And, um, I heard them talking about, you know, how do, how do I help my student, um, when they're struggling academically? And so, uh, I just kind of was talking with the team and we need to like lift up the things that are happening and bring them to everyone's awareness. So, uh, I wanted to share some of these things tonight and it will be, um, a diligent effort that we undertake as we get into the fall to make these things that we're doing known. Um, and build upon them as people give us feedback. So, um, we have some awareness and skill building kind of opportunities. So, um, Mr. Vatier talked about enrollment and reregistration. So we have been offering Ares Parent Portal workshops. We know it'll be even more crucial as we get into the fall when folks are not only thinking about reregistration, but wanting to check students' grades and wanting to look and see kind of progress, monitor their students. So we'll continue with those, with those workshops. Um, also workshops around Google Platform, how to access the digital textbooks, walking parents through clever portal and how they get there. Um, and then we don't want to lose sight of what our big picture goal is. We know that we're here to, um, ensure that kids are college and career ready. And so we have to keep our eyes on the A through G requirement. So we'll continue to offer, um, those, uh, you know, workshops for parents to build their awareness, um, help them become, you know, more informed about what's involved and, you know, what they can be keeping an eye open for as their students, um, progress through the grade levels. And then also providing great, uh, grading guidelines so that parents are aware because sometimes there's a mismatch. Um, I go to my child's conference and, you know, I'm finding out that my child is not doing well and then I'm, I'm left, you know, nobody tells me what to do next kind of thing. So, um, really just building that awareness for parents and, um, helping them become the advocate for their child, you know, that we all, the role that we all step into as parents. Um, and then lastly, we hear this quite a bit as well, you know, tutoring. We're looking for tutoring for our students. Um, this is just one. We have a partnership with Loma Linda University that we've had for years. Um, so that continues. They are able, um, and willing to do that, uh, virtual, um, tutoring with some of their, um, you know, some of their, uh, students from the university. Um, and so then the last and final slide, David, if you would please. Now, this is really, um, these are actually more academic focused. The other ones were, you know, awareness. These are really focused on, um, the literacy and math workshops. So we have virtual Kinder and First Grade Reading Club. So we're, uh, parents, um, and their kids are sitting side by side, reading books, um, walking, you know, having somebody kind of guide through what kind of questions to ask and things like that. Um, and then a virtual reading, uh, read aloud. So that's hosted by UCR where they have folks who are reading, doing a read aloud and you could kind of sit with your child and do that. Um, we have Footsteps to Brilliance, which is our early literacy offered in both English and Spanish, which is one of our digital platform forms that allows students to go on. Um, and we imagine teachers will be utilizing this as part of their asynchronous instruction. So they can provide a lesson and then direct them to where they need them to go on Footsteps to Brilliance for the asynchronous piece. Um, Imagine Learning, uh, these are all again, just literacy, workshops to help parents see the resources that are there for them. And then again, Myon, uh, eighty-four hundred plus digital resources in English and Spanish. Spanish is a pretty robust, um, system. And then to match that on the math side, we have Freckle, which provides the math support for K through six. So this is, um, distance learning two point oh. You could see things have been, um, built out to be much more robust.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. And I'm gonna stop right there and back up and Dr. Flores before we move to communications, I believe has a, uh, clarification as well.
Uh, I, you covered it, uh, Dr. Pettis, in this last, um, the parent family supports and also for the teachers. But I want to commend you and your staff and your, you know, administrators and teachers because this is very robust, uh, very robust and very, um, you know, um, structured, uh, and so that, that's what we need to have for the teachers and also for our, our families and our kids and, uh, flexible to many different ways. Um, I look forward to seeing how, you know, they do the small groups and all of that. It would be great to, to see and when they get started. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Our teams have been working hard.
Yeah, it's really great. And I'm glad that you included the, you know, the English learners and, uh, and the bilingual, uh, dual language programs as well. So that's fabulous. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Rogers, can I?
So you wanna go ahead now before we get into communication? Okay, and I'll get you, Mr. Gallo after.
Can we back up a slide, um? So, Dr. Perez, I, I wanna make sure, because we brought this up earlier. There were some teachers that wanted to use Zoom. And we said we're gonna allow them to use Zoom. So I don't see Zoom anywhere on the documents. And it's gonna be important because I heard you talk about doing breakout sessions and different rooms. The teachers I talked to said that Zoom is better at doing that than the, the Google Meets. I don't know if it's true or not. I'm just telling what they tell. But it, but it, but it might be, uh, uh, an advantage to everyone to sit down and have a discussion and maybe show what it can and can't do. Maybe you can show what Google can do. And we can come to the agreement that, yes, we are gonna allow you to use Zoom. But if you're gonna do that, then we need to make that decision upfront. Because if we're gonna give out these Chromebooks and we're gonna create an image, meaning that we're gonna load pre-lost in the Chromebook, you definitely want to load the Zoom stuff, uh, as soon as possible. You don't want to send it out. And I don't know, I don't know what kind of admin rights or what you allow the parents to download on devices. But it'd be a whole lot better to do it before you give the students the device. And two, if you're gonna do it, then you might want to at least have some type of ability to offer the parents training in Zoom. As, as minor as it may seem, it's still something that you have to get used to. There's a difference between Zoom and WebEx and Google Meet. I know that because you guys make it use all of them, but but, but for the parents, it makes a difference. So I just want to make sure if we really are gonna allow the use of Zoom, then we need to incorporate it now, uh, in some of your presentations and your thought pattern in terms of knowing that it's gonna be used by some of our teachers.
So thank you for that, Mr. Tillman. Um, what I understood and, and I, I believe there's conversations that are happening, but what we did agree on, um, in March when we went, you know, originally to distance learning was that, um, Google would be the instructional vehicle for delivery. So Google Classroom. Um, and that Zoom would, and, and there was conversations around what's role Zoom would play. So-
That's why I'm bringing it up though, because the teachers were saying they'd rather teach in Zoom. Not use it as a side thing. And I thought-
Their primary.
Yes, they want to use it as their primary. And does that create a problem?
Let me follow up, um, with our IT team because I do recall some, some concerns around Zoom and some of like the Zoom bombing that was happening and happening and things like that. But let me, let me clarify and follow up with our IT team on, on that matter.
It's important.
Thank you.
And, and just, just to not notice to be clear, because we had another issue in the past, but when, when it's a big deal when we bring something up and you guys say, okay. Because then people have the expectation that that means it's gonna be actionable and we're gonna, you know, uh, deliver on it. So, and I, and I, and I'm fine with having a discussion and you say, you know what, this is not gonna work. That's why I said, maybe you can bring some folks together to see how it's gonna integrate. But when we say that, yeah, uh, we want to use Zoom and some of you say, okay, they can use Zoom, but it has to be for real. It has to be, uh, accepted and then put in, in a way where it's gonna benefit the students and the parents in the end.
I hear you. Yeah.
I'm with you, Mr. Tillman. Um, Mr. Gallo?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I wasn't gonna talk about Zoom, but Zoom has a lot of other, um, you know, flexible uh, type of things like you can, uh, mute, uh, students and, um, uh, they can't unmute themselves. And that's been a big deal on, um, uh, classroom management, et cetera, or Zoom management, or whatever you want to talk about with, um, uh, Google Meets and stuff. But, uh, uh, what I wanted to ask is how do parents, uh, sign up for these, uh, parent and family supports? I mean, is this done through their local schools? Are we, how are we gonna ensure that they're actually getting the services and supports that they, uh, request and, um, uh, that we're actually tracking this and, and providing appropriate resources to do all of these different kinds of, uh, supports that you've, uh, identified?
That's a great question, Mr. Gallo. Um, so it goes back to my, uh, you know, kind of message that I've been putting out there around family engagement happens at the school site. That is my core belief. Um, we are hosting these workshops centrally from the Parent Engagement Office now. As we move into the school year, that we, the plan is that people will be able to take these hosted from their school sites. So you could go onto your school webpage and find, uh, one of these classes that maybe, you know, is hosted initially by our, by our Family Engagement Team and then do a gradual release out to the schools. And the reason is schools are gonna have different needs. So there may be some schools who really need a very intense support around, you know, math. And so then they can kind of pick and choose from, from a menu and say, th- these are the supports that we need. So then we would match the offerings to what the schools need. So right now, it is happening through the Family Engagement Office and everybody comes, you know, centrally to receive that support.
So do people, do parents know how to reach you and how to make that request and how to participate?
So there is a, it, it's actually, once you get on the website, very easy, but it is getting people to the website and know, knowing what's on the website. Um, that is the challenge.
It's, it's pretty complicated, the website, I gotta tell you.
So we have a calendar once they are on the Family Engagement website and they literally can click on a link and that will take them to the registration. That part's easy. Well, somewhat easy. It's actually getting folks to, to be able to navigate and know, um, that the Family Engagement page is where they need to land. And we need to do a better job with, with communicating that.
Well, it just might be good to put out in, um, you know, some kind of a, uh, email communication that gives you various links to click and it takes you right to, uh, each one of these. Maybe, uh, having each one of these programs be identified with a clickable link. And this is something you can go to the website, find this whole, this whole briefing with the entire list and cadre of par- parent and family supports. And then just click a link that takes you there to do whatever registration and, and calendarization, um, it might do, so.
I, I will share that we're, um, preparing a parent resource guide, um, that we, we will, um, unveil in the fall, um, that is designed to do that. We, from various parent meetings, and it wasn't just the parent workshops, but they were asking for things like, I don't know how to navigate the school system. Like what is the board's role? What is the cabinet's role? So we're actually putting something together that lays that out for our community so that they have a better understanding of the inner workings of our organization. And then how do I get the resources? You know, whether it be childcare or these, these, um, courses and, and workshops that are being offered for them.
Thank you.
All right. We will pick it up with the communication plan.
Uh, thank you, President Rogers. Uh, good evening, Board, as you know, and for the public. I'm Ginger Antiveros, Executive Director of Community Engagement and Communications. And tonight I'm gonna share some information about our school reopening communications plan. Your direction and the great work of our planning teams must be shared with our students, parents and employees in a way that makes information simple to navigate, easy to understand and as timely as possible, given the complexity of our, um, current environment. We've developed and we continue to refine a comprehensive communications plan through which we will provide useful information to help our families and employees prepare for the start of the school year. Our plan is centered on three key messages. The first, which you, Board, have made our top priority, is our commitment to safety. We want the people that we serve to know that we genuinely care about them and that we're working hard to ensure that our schools and our work environments are both sanitized and safe. Next slide. Second, we'll emphasize that when it becomes safe, parents will have their choice in how their children will learn throughout the remainder of the school year. It'll be our job to, to ensure that they understand the learning options that'll eventually be available to them. So while we're we're planning for full distance learning now, when it is safe, they will be able to choose either blended learning, which combines the in-person with online instruction, or an extension of the distance learning model with which we're gonna start the school year. Our third key message relates to the higher, uh, level of quality that they should expect from the distance learning um, when they come to school, uh, this, this August. Um, as we learned from Dr. Perez, the voluntary remote learning that happened last spring will be replaced with a more robust and comprehensive model of online instruction, required attendance and graded work. Next slide. These three key messages of safety, choice, quality will be deployed across the full spectrum of our communication toolset. We'll be also reminding our stakeholders about the variety of ways from low tech to high tech in English and in Spanish that they can receive up-to-date information from the district. We know that, um, people have different preferences in their communication and we want to make sure they know how to find the method that works best for them. We'll also be sharing details about new procedures such as the online enrollment process that Mr. Vatier spoke about earlier, reminding them about important dates, like the fact that school starts on August third, and connecting our family with resources that they need, like those that Dr. Perez shared in her presentation. In fact, we've already begun communicating your decisions through social media messaging, robo-calls and letters home. You'll be seeing videos, advertising, and yes, a streamlined website to, uh, help um, our families navigate that information better in the coming days and weeks. We're preparing templates for our schools to use to assist them in communication too, and we're already thinking ahead to the signage, posters, flyers and more that will be needed to inform our students, parents and employees about the new safety expectations that they will encounter when they return to our campuses. Mario Haquez, who is leading the step six of the returning, uh, of the school reopening work, his whole committee and the entire communications team is working overtime to ensure that information becomes available, um, and is shared as soon as it can be. And we really appreciate the clarity that you, Board, have provided about the priorities we should include in that messaging to the community. So thank you very much.
So Board, that takes us to the end of our presentation and just a review again of the action steps that are currently in process. Um, we met with the Board Subcommittee yesterday around the Board Policy Revision for the COVID Mitigation Plan. We met with the Board Subcommittee yesterday around the Board Policy Revision for the COVID Mitigation Plan. You'll receive the first reading of that at the August 4th Board Meeting. We continue to communicate through Mr. Vatier with our County Public Health, monitoring the. The transmission rates of COVID specifically within our boundaries that make up SBCUSD. We are currently negotiating with our collective bargaining units. And expecting to be able to move and be ready for the start of the school year when it comes to what is distance learning look like? What is this robust program actually going to be through an agreement with our SBTA? As well as our other bargaining units as it pertains to their work. We're continuing to train up our schools on our guidelines for reopening schools. Today, we had a meeting with all of our site leaders around the communication plan. And how to really start engaging their families and sharing everything that's been going on from our communications department and the role of the school in that work. As well as social emotional learning supports and what that needs to, and how we're. Supporting our schools in being able to offer social emotional wellness and supports, not just for our students, but for. Our staff as well. So that was part of our training today. So we continue with that. We are coordinating our planning and operational efforts with our incident management team. They are instrumental in seeing the details of this work through. Next slide. We're, we have now the deployment of the communication plan that Ms. Ontiveros just spoke about. So we're in that deployment stage of it. Again, revising things and proving upon and just really strengthening the outreach. We just know we can't get enough communication out to everybody. In these, these very changing times. We continue to coordinate with our local community childcare agencies and the complexities around that. You heard a lot from Dr. Perez tonight around implementing the SB 98 parameters. That's a big part that then coincides with our negotiations efforts. And to have us ready for that opening of school on the 3rd of August. And finally, food services continues to operate to, to provide this essential function of feeding our students. And Ms. Christakis, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit to this beautiful, colorful picture of the food that our families are receiving. When they come to pickup.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Menares. So the families will be receiving, I believe it's 24 pounds of produce weekly. And also there will be milk, a couple gallons of milk that will be given away as well. And so we applaud their efforts and, and building partnerships and providing these valuable resources to our families.
Thank you, Ms. Christakis. So Board, what we want you to hear in all of this is that we continue to improve our systems to get better. The, the feeding is an example of it. Improving distance learning, that's another example. Collecting data, we are not done with our collection of preferences. We appreciate your feedback. Around the workforce and not calling it a preference, but maybe having a different term to identify that, that's, that's a very valid. So we are committed to being a learning, learning organization. We do not believe we are perfect by any means, but we are committed to continuously getting better. And we hope that you're hearing that and all that we're doing because we are in this together. And so if there are any further questions from the Board.
I do not see any questions in the chat, so therefore I believe you've answered everything. Y'all did a great job. Again, I commend you on your efforts. As well as the previous week and getting this information out to our community and to our parents. And ultimately. It's trickling down. Our students are seeing that we are making forth the effort to make everything safe and proper. And prepared for them when it comes to August 3rd. So I think this is important and I know. That everyone should be able to see their, their, their footprints are all over this because. Each time we see this presentation for the Board, we've seen it and seen it and seen it. But the comments that are, that come up at the time are entered in. We're building this together and I just think it's, it's great. We didn't just pause and throw up our hands, but you guys continue to do a stellar job and I appreciate each one of you. Okay, we will now move back. I'm going to move back to 8.2 because I missed that there was a be it resolved in there. So 8.2, which was the Building Fund Financial and Performance Audits Report for the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Business Service. Be it resolved that the, that the Building Fund, scoot down, Measure T and Measure N Financial and Performance Audits. Report for the Financial Year 2018-2019 was completed on February 12, 2020, the final day of the audits fieldwork. The report was presented to the Measure T and N Bond Citizens Oversight Committee on March 11, 2020. Be it further resolved that the Building Fund Measure T and Measure N Financial and Performance Audits. Report for the Fiscal Year 2019, 2018-2019 as prepared by ID Bailey LLP be accepted as submitted.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. I'm going to call for the vote if there's no additional questions. Mr. Gallo.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll go back to 9.1. Board Member Comments. So I will start with Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, I know a lot of you were able to say and ask the questions I was thinking about during all those presentations. So I just want to say thank you to, you know, our executive cabinet, our entire team. That has put together that plan and continues to modify the plan, as I was explaining to somebody earlier, almost on a daily basis. You know, as the information comes back from our surveys and as we get information back. From the state and CDE and our own county and the governor. This continues to be a fluidic process. And just when we think we have a, something that we're going to make our mind on today, it changes tomorrow. So. You know, I want to just continue to ask our community for patience with us. As well as our, our students and our staff. I know, I know all of us are doing the best we possibly can. And we are putting safety first and foremost, which I really do appreciate, you know, that we're doing that because. I think it's easy to say, yeah, we want to just come back physically. We want kids back. And as we could see. 50% of our parents would like our students to come back in some sort of hybrid form as well. So it's really difficult to respect everyone's decisions and desires. But as you can see, we're doing our very best to do so. But again, putting safety first. So. I applaud everyone. I applaud our Board for being courageous as well. And for making the decision to go to distance learning completely at the beginning of the year. I think it's the right decision. I believe in the decision. But I know as time goes on, we will figure out a great physical reentry plan. And again, that will be at the direction of the Board as well as Cabinet. And with input from our community, our employees and our students. So thanks again out there, folks. We really do appreciate you. Everyone that's watching today, again, we appreciate your input as well. These are difficult times. But I think we're doing a great job of again, putting safety first and designing incredible plan. I've got a lot of messages tonight saying, wow, I am so impressed with what your district is doing and not just by being careful. But the amount of work that's being put into this is just absolutely incredible. I don't think people give our folks enough credit for what they're doing behind the scenes. Because there's so many people behind the scenes. We just see these presentations, but the, I'm going to say the thousands of hours that have been put into this. Is unquestionable for what our folks are doing. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Dr. Flores.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo what Dr. Wyatt just said. I think that we took the courageous step to make a decision. On the side of safety for all of our, not just our kids and our employees, but all our community. And, and that's really important. And I don't know if the public knows, but San Diego unified and LA unified today. Boards voted to also open up virtually. They're the two biggest. School districts in the state. And like Scott said, our, you know, our staff, our cabinet, all our administrators, our teachers. I mean, are classified. You just, you know, have gone the extra mile. More, more some. And I know Cabinet, you've put in so many hours. And Dr. Volkermer, thank you for your leadership and your steady state. You. You, it's obvious that all of us care and love our community. And that's really, really important. And I want to give a shout out to Dr. Monades. Dr. Monades was selected and awarded the Central Administrator of the Year. For the California Association of Latino Superintendent and Administrators. And. That's a great honor, Dr. Monades. And. And you're, you deserve it. Your, your leadership is incredible. And all of you, all of you. You know, just shine. And I have to tell you that I get calls from neighboring school board members. Not just in our area, but throughout the state. And, you know, I sent them all kinds of stuff that we've done. Your PowerPoints, et cetera. They're very, very thankful for the, the hard work that you've done. So. Your, your work is being appreciated in ways that you don't even know. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to echo what my, the, the two board members before me said. I won't repeat anything, but I agree with all that you said. It's a good time to work with this Board because I believe that we're, we're at the same place and we all want the same for our students and that's safety. We want them well-educated, but we certainly want them safe first. And I'm just hoping as we move along and as training is provided. That we will. That we will. You know, continue and, and to have all of our staff members to. Have all of our staff members to participate in all the training to make them better, which will make us better. And I, I do want to say to all of my younger fellow board members, don't rule out us senior citizens and the grandparents around. Because we still know how to do a little more than turn on, turn on the computer, Mr. Tillman. But I just want to say. They wanted, you want to, we, we want you to give all of us. Our due now because we, we are able to do. And I, I'm so proud of Cabinet and all the staff members who worked on this project. And as the others said. I hear in the community and I speak a lot in the community. In fact, I spoke to a Kiwanis group today. And shared with them the wonderful things that you're doing. And you, we don't commend you enough. And. I just want to say thank you and thank you, Dr. Volkermer, for your leadership. And I, I feel we're moving in the right direction at the right time. I have something I wanted to read that was on, I'm on my laptop that was on the. Chromebook and all of a sudden it checked out on me. So, in a rate, if I can get a minute at the end, Madam President.
Danny can probably fix it. He can probably tell you what you need to press. No, yes, you can.
I was saying sign out.
Yeah. Okay, welcome back to you, Dr. Hill. And Mr. Tillman, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just found it. So I want to.
Okay. Did you go?
No, I, I did something wrong. No, let Mr. Tillman out.
Go ahead and see if you can find it. Mr. Tillman, go right ahead. I'm sure you're ready.
Yeah, Dr. Hill, spend that extra $20 a month to upgrade that wifi.
Okay, I will. I will.
I, I want to thank the Board and the, the Dr. Volkermer and all the assistants, all the staff, teachers. Classified employees, everybody for coming together, parents, students. These are tough times and. You can't minimize it. You know, I, I'm at work every day and you, you, people come in, you hear about somebody sick, having a fever. Somebody's daughter, mother, grandmother getting sick. Sadly, some passing away now. So the, the stress that we are feeling is for a reason. This is real. This is unprecedented. But we're doing it the right way. I feel so proud of our district because we haven't allowed. Politics to seep in and have us do things that don't make sense. And I tell people all the time, when you see people doing things that don't make sense, it's because. They're leaning too hard on their politics and not doing what, the right thing for the people in the community. And, and this district right now is doing everything right. And I think that's why we're playing a role of leadership. Because we're allowing the facts, the data, and, 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 and. The state of the virus to dictate how we're going to respond to it. And that's the only way to go through this. It's only going to wait for a short time. It's going to, it'll be gone before we know it. In a year or two, it'll just be a memory. So I think we, I, I always caution us to realize that it seems like it's a lot right now, but it's not going to be forever. So we just need to do the best we can in a bad situation right now. And we're doing that. So I feel great about opening on the 3rd, giving ourselves time to get our PPEs in and get prepared to open in the right way. And, and even in doing this, reaching out for those students who are in most need. And I, I, I hear the presentation, but I just want to make sure that. We don't lose focus on the fact that some of our students are going to do real well in distance learning. So we need to reach out to those students and find a way just to make every effort possible to help them be successful. And I know we'll work on doing that together. So again, thank you for all your hard work. And if we continue where we're going. We'll, we'll do, we'll do a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina.
I was waiting. For some reason it was taking you know, a while to unmute. No, thank you, Madam President. Of course, the same thing what all the other board members were saying, safety is number one, wear your masks. I wear, I wear my mask out of respect for others' health. Continue to physical distance. We are like, as Mr. Tillman mentioned, we are in difficult times. Just note that. Our Board is here to ensure the safety of all of our students, our staff. And also noting the fact that there's many students at home that are in unsafe environments. We want to make sure our teachers are, be our, our educators are vigilant and watching out for possible signs of abuse as well. That's why seeing and, and hearing our students and trying to find ways where they're able to communicate to, to the teachers. Via cameras, via the, the computer as well. So we want to make sure that we're looking and trying to address that. Like I mentioned, difficult times. My sister actually mentioned with regards to her kindergartner. And the fear that even if she was to have her son go back to school, what would that really look like for a kindergartner? When you have to, now you cannot talk too, too close to your friend. You can't hug and children tend to be. You know, really contact friendly, you know, wanting to hug and, and play with toys. And so what does that really look like? When we, if we were to go back to that situation and, and really thinking about having our students go to school. So then for her, it was, I prefer them to be home. That way he does, he learns to still communicate. And interact and not learn these habits that maybe in school they may learn how to stay away from other students and, and can do more harm than good. So thank you, the district, for doing what you're doing. And we're definitely in the right, heading in the right direction.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well, I wear my mask too, Abigail, even though it's hard to cover up this beautiful face, right?
That's right.
Dr. Hill, thank you for recognizing us senior citizen Board Members. That was great. But I, I really do. Want to let the public know how difficult this is for our. Staff and leadership to actually navigate through this process. Danny characterized it well when he said, you know, he's proud of what this district is doing. I am too. I know sometimes we might get a bit critical as Board Members and really press in on some of the. Very specifics, detailed work. But it's only because you've done the prep work and have. The, you know, forethought to bring this to the Board for consideration and, and a full discussion. And I really appreciate that, Dr. And I really appreciate that, Dr. Volkermer, and for your entire team and the way you've kind of spread it out among the assistant superintendents. And I know it's the whole staff. I know that you've engaged teachers and remainder of our other staff members, our classified employees and and our families and and student populations and voices as well. So this is no small feat in coordinating that. And I want you to know that we do recognize that. And so just because sometimes we might be commenting and it might sound a little bit negative, that's certainly not the intent. It's simply to probe, do the best we can have other viewpoints at least raised and considered. And, you know, we just thank you for allowing that dialogue and engaging us in that detailed conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hill, are you are you back up and ready?
I am. And this someone has sent to me, and I just thought I wanted to share with all of you tonight. And especially with all we heard from the from the beginning of our meeting to the end. Is our attitude has all to do with determining the kind of experiences that come to us. The love attitude brings harmony of experience. The fear attitude brings confusion. So thanks for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And so we're going down the homestretch. And I just want, without repeating everything because I'm in total agreement with everything that's been said, and I just want to also commend you all as board members. And, you know, that the fact that we're working together and being very responsive together with all of the different viewpoints that we see and the engagement with the many, many families and students and community members are are reaching out to all of us. And we appreciate their comments because it helped us to think about things that perhaps we didn't think about. But I'm I'm glad to be a part of a team where we're just not being reactive. But we are being responsive in a professional way and saying, we know that safety is at the core. We know that that's embedded in the work that we're doing and been embedded in the work since March and prior. And so we'll continue to march in this marathon because it is a it's a marathon. It's definitely not, you know, a quick race, a 100 yard dash. It is quick. It is a marathon that we're going through together. So I'm appreciative to that. I would like to just for you to capture in the notes that I think, I don't know which subgroup it would be, but we definitely want to start looking at who's going to start capturing the numbers for those that are at risk. Looking at the student side, looking at the teacher's side, and making sure that that's now on our radar because we've been very good about staying ahead of knowing where we need to be. And I think it's time for us to add that in there and get some, you know, some capture some more data, just like we did tonight in in revising what we need to capture from our staff. So we thank you all and everyone that's we're in this together, working it through. But it really, during a difficult time, has been very easy to work with everyone. So I am now, I know, Dr. Volkermer, we stole some of your thunder because we like to congratulate individuals when you tell us. So we're going to turn it over to you now.
Thank you. Thank you, President Rogers. Board, thank you. Thank you for your comments. You've heard me say a number of times, and I don't think I can say it enough, that this has been an absolute total team effort between the board, cabinet, every level of the organization, every sector of our of our team, our classified employees, our certificated employees, managers. Everybody has just jumped in and helped us really rise to every challenge we've faced so far. We've got new challenges ahead of us, and we're rising to meet those as well. And I'm very excited about where we're going with distance learning and how we can make that much better for kids. Just a couple other comments. I didn't want it to move. I didn't want to move past past it too quickly. In terms of the Citizens Oversight Committee report that you received and the audit report that you received this evening, this is a very clear manifestation of your fiduciary responsibility. And that you've managed funds well. I want to thank Mrs. Christakis and her teams and facilities and finance. We, as Mr. Tillman mentioned, this is hundreds of millions of dollars that have been used and spent appropriately and responsibly. And that's very important. I didn't want that the moment to pass through without being very clear about this. This is you managing money very, very, very well. And this is money that we went to the public and said, what do you want? And even more important, that you that the Citizens Oversight Committee can say, we're spending it the way the community asked that it be spent because it's their tax dollars ultimately. So I didn't want that to be lost. A few weeks ago, I announced that our district won first place in the County Schools Video Vision Video Challenge. I want to thank our Communications Department, then under the leadership of Linda Bardier, now under the leadership of Ginger Ontiveros, but particularly David Chavez and Daniel Tisdale, who, as you know, are absolutely wonderful at what they do. We highlighted one of our health science pathways in this video and took top honors. I hope you can see this, but we received this beautiful plaque. I don't know if you can see that from the County Schools Office in recognition of our efforts and a check, you can't see this probably as well, for $10,000 in terms of winning this. So we'll display the check proudly. I'm cashing the check and going on vacation. No, I'm just kidding. Cash a check and it'll go toward bolstering those programs in the district. So.
And take 10% for Margaret's internet service, would you?
As has been mentioned, I want to also congratulate Dr. Menares on being recognized as the Region's Pick Six Central Office Administrator of the Year for CALSA. Very, very much deserved recognition, as was evidenced this evening very clearly. Congratulations, Rachel, on much deserved kudos. And then finally, I want to I would like to end with one final shout out this evening for our retirees and those members of our teams that have gotten to 25 years and 35 years and 40 years of service with our district. We want to thank them for their decades of service and for the countless number of students that they've impacted positively. If you're retiring, we want to extend our best wishes for many, many years of health and happiness. And if you're returning, we want to say we're looking forward to you building on your legacy of excellence within the district. So those are my comments for the this evening. Thank you.
Harold, can you post that video that you showed during closed session about the retirees and and the, you know, various service awards?
Absolutely.
Great.
Thank you for that. All right, we're now at our consent items. I have a 10.9 so far and 10 10.37. Dr. Wyatt will be taking over for me, and I'll go until he tells me to come back. I guess if he doesn't tell me to come back, I'll see you, you know, tomorrow. Is there anything else to pull besides 2.9 and 10.37? No?
No.
You guys you guys don't want me to come back? Okay, are we gonna? Is there a?
I'll make a motion. Motion approved. Yep.
Okay. I think I heard a motion in a second.
Barbara and I.
All right, one of the discuss if there's no other discussion, Mr. Gallo.
Yes, I.
Ms. Rosales Medina. I think she's saying it, but she's mute.
Yeah, I I can hear me now.
Mr. Tillman.
Hi.
Okay, Dr. Hill.
I.
Dr. Flores.
I.
Dr. Wyatt.
I.
And Gwen Rogers. I. Okay, motion carry. And so.
Madam President, question. 9 and 10.37.
So now we're going to go and vote on those and and I'm going to I'll just go ahead and and go out now if that's okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait until the 10.3 till you say it?
Was it 10.37 or 10.9?
It's 10.37 for me.
Okay, and who's 10.9?
That's.
Dr. Wyatt, that was ours to pull. Janie has clarification on that item.
There's a couple items.
No, go ahead, Ms. Christakis. I'm looking for you. There you are.
So so 10.9, there is an item in there, though there are federal, state, and local. So when we present changes in budget to you, that reduces our inland career education center So we thought that we were going to get cut and the but and then the Final Budget Act, our adult education did not get cut. So we just want to pull that one item that reduces the budget and then move forward with the other items in that agenda, 10.9.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. I don't believe there's any discussion I see. So I'll call for the vote. So Dr. Wyatt.
I.
Dr. Flores.
I.
Dr. Hill.
I.
Mr. Tillman.
I.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
I.
Mr. Gallo.
I.
And Ms. Rogers, I. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, 10.3, and I'll be recusing myself. It's an MOU for Uplift Family Services. All right, I'm going.
All righty.
So moved.
Any discussion on 10.37?
No.
No? All right, and let me come back where I could see everyone. Okay, well, let's go ahead and take a vote. Mr. Tillman.
I.
Dr. Hill.
I.
Dr. Flores.
I.
And Ms. Rosales Medina.
I.
Mr. Gallo.
I.
And Dr. Wyatt, myself, I. All right, that will carry. So let's go ahead and invite our Madam President back. Thank you very much.
I texted her, Dr. Wyatt.
Oh, wow, you're awesome. I had it preloaded just in case too, so. All right, hopefully she'll be coming back. So let's go ahead and look back at our agenda once she comes back. And I think that's it for our consent items. And while we're waiting for her, we could move on to 11.1, which will be our personnel report.
Presented for your approval.
So moved.
All righty, let's go ahead and go through this. I wish we could say unanimous I, but we'll go one at a time.
But you might.
Ms. Rosales Medina, you're first on my picture.
I.
Oh, Madam President is back. Ms. Rogers.
I.
Mr. Tillman.
I.
Dr. Hill.
I.
Dr. Flores.
I.
Mr. Gallo.
I.
And myself, I. Motion carries. Thank you.
Great job, Miss Dr. Wyatt.
That was that was very painful. Thank you for coming back, Gwen.
Is it 11 o'clock yet?
11.2.
11.2, 2020 CSBA Delegate Assembly runoff. And we have a runoff here. We're gonna.
I'm voting to vote for Barbara Flores, Dr. Flores.
I'm sorry, I need I need resume. Can someone tell me who this person is and why she would deserve?
Okay, so you all know what it is. Okay. I heard of Dr. Flores, but I I Karen, are you on there? Do we have to say how many voted or, you know, can we do that? She probably told me about this, and now she's like, look, you're on your own. I don't see her. Okay, so we're we're we have. For it. Say again.
We have to vote for whoever.
It's it's all right. It's Dr. Barbara Flores, San Bernardino City Unified. And there was a vote in, was there a second?
Yes, I.
All right, discussion about this. Do you want to know anything else about her? All right, I'll take the vote. Mr. Gallo.
I.
Ms. Rosales Medina. Uh-oh, she's saying yes.
That's a no. That's a no.
There's always a delay. I'll just have to keep my my microphone off.
That was a definite I. Mr. Tillman.
I.
Dr. Hill.
I.
Dr. Flores, do you get to vote on yourself? Yeah. Flores, I. Dr. Wyatt.
I.
And Gwen Rogers, I. Motion carried. All right. Being resolved that the Board of Education chooses Dr. Barbara Flores to fill the vacant delegate seat for California School Board Association Delegate Assembly Subregion 116B.
All right.
And our condolences to their to her colleagues.
Oh, my God.
And Gwen or to, I'm just kidding.
Here we go. 11.3, approval of the memorandum of understanding between San Bernardino City Unified School District and certain charter schools for service. Being resolved that the Board of Education approves the memorandum of understanding between San Bernardino City Unified School District and certain charter schools for services.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Is there a discussion? No? All right, Dr. Wyatt.
I.
Dr. Flores.
I.
Dr. Hill.
I.
Mr. Tillman.
I.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
I.
Mr. Gallo.
I.
Gwen Rogers, I. Motion carried. Summary of board reports request 12.1. Is that you, Dr. Menares?
That is me.
Okay.
Okay, not too many tonight, board. So the first one, and I'm I'm kind of going to combine them. Ms. Medina, you first asked about a social media employee posting kind of policy. And then, Dr. Flores, you came back and said there is a policy, so you want to revisit it. So that will be, if that works for the two of you, that's one.
Yes.
Perfect. And then, Dr. Hill, you requested that we provide the family preference by grade level. And so we'll bring that back with the data to date, whatever we have at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
That you are welcome. Mr. Tillman, I hope I get I captured this correctly. Investigate possibly, including Zoom, through a collaborative process with teachers and IT.
Yeah, well, I don't know how you want to capture it, but I think we all agree that we want to allow the teachers to use Zoom during this instruction period. So the number one, make sure it's loaded on all the computers when we give them out. And then if we're going to do it, then make sure we provide training to the parents.
Okay.
And teachers are going to do it.
And I do recall, Dr. Perez, she was going to just double check with IT to see if there's any implications. And if there are, to work with teachers and 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 come to some problem solving around that. So.
The biggest thing I'm concerned about is that I think we've said we were going to standardize on Google. So we gave the impression that you only can use Google and only Google is sanctioned. I want that to be blown up and say you can use Google or Zoom.
I agree.
So so we'll capture that. Thank you. And then, Ms. Rogers, tell me if I captured this correctly. Develop a system to capture those at risk. And then you said teacher and student.
It's just the same way you've done with the other data. Now we we continue to talk about those that are at risk. So now we know who can we at one portion says who's coming back. Now we want to identify are there in that pool individuals that are high risk students? Because we're getting calls that I have asthma, I have, you know, different different challenges that are we know exist within the body of our our school district. So we need to start to survey that and.
The children that have that are fragile or have vulnerabilities.
Right, and and teachers and teachers.
Thank you. And and then the last one was just Mr. Tillman, or not Mr. Tillman, Mr. Gallo. You asked that we post the video of the retirees on social media so that others can see it. So we'll be sure to.
Yeah, and again, on our website as well.
Got it. That's it.
Okay, great. So let's see, 13.1. At 11. Move to adjourn. Thank you again, everybody. We are adjourning this meeting. We appreciate those that labored with us tonight. Hopefully, you got something out of our meeting, and we will see you soon again. Good night, everybody. Remember, we're in this together.
Good night.
Yes, Mike. Good night and God bless.